Good morning again. I'm going to ask clerk if you can please let us know who are present in the hall.
Currently present in the session hall are yourself, Senator Tenorio, Senator Rector, Senator Munia Barnes, and Vice Speaker Cruz. There is no quarrel, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Sergeant at arms, we're going to ask, could you please call the offices and ask the senators to come into session? Can we all rise for prayer? And I ask Senator Tenorio if you can lead us in prayer. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas.
(Singing)
Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. And the singing of the Guam hymn by Senator Panglinen. And then for the national anthem, Senator Blas. Thank you Senator Palacios. serve as a member of the Guam Land Use Commission with that committee's recommendation to confirm. And also from that same committee, on the appointment of Ms. Belinda Mejia, Mejia, to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board with that committee's recommendation to confirm, I move that those items just read be placed in the voting file.
On that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Now, Madam Speaker, with the remaining two items, at such time the chairpersons are at such time where at the point where these are ready for floor discussion, then I would move that they be, we can go back to the concurrent calendar, and then that's when I would make a motion with floor discuss, with some discussion, and then we would discuss those nominees at that time. That's just information.
Okay, on that motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Okay, that concludes all of my motions, Madam Speaker.
Senator Tenorio, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I appreciate the fact that we have a lengthy calendar, but I would like to ask to place Bill Number 10-30 on the agenda. Bill 10-30 is an act which has been heard and has a public hearing, had a public hearing and was reported out of committee. This is the bill which would allow for qualifying certificates to be given to physicians of critical needs, and we've recently had the issue with the Cancer Center for possibly closing, and I think we need to hear issues like this at this time. It is a matter that is timely, which I think is essential for us to look at as a body before the time comes where we don't have specialty needs attended to by the people of Guam by physicians. So I ask that the bill be placed on the bottom of the second reading.
On that motion, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. That actually was a discussion in the Committee on Rules meeting we had, and was moved by Committee Member Senator Espaldan. And at your request, Madam Speaker, because the legislature is currently moving to provide a holistic solution and that kind of approach, the mover of that amendment withdraw that motion. And so, like, I know I'm saying in the rules meeting, that was entertaining the rules meeting, there was some feedback provided by yourself and other members of the Rules Committee, and so the motion to put that bill on the agenda at the Committee on Rules was withdrawn, and so, based on that, I stand in opposition of adding any further additional bills on the agenda, given that that bill was already discussed at Friday's meeting.
Since there is an objection to the motion, then I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Those who are in favor... Would it, would you like for me to step down and explain why?
Sure.
Okay, so...
You're recognized, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to respond to the motion that was made by Senator Tenorio to place Bill Number 10. And yesterday, that was a discussion, and I had asked the body if they would reconsider placing that bill on the agenda, because there are three bills total that would like to deal with the specialist, medical specialists for Guam to address Guam's needs, and Senator Taitegui has a bill, Senator Tenorio, and myself, and it's not that I want to push one bill over the other, but we were requested by the medical community that they would like to sit down with the senators then, so that we can address and have a holistic approach, you know, to pushing, putting one bill forward that would address their needs. So I'm asking then, my colleagues, that to please allow that to occur. I have assured Senator Taitegui as well, that I would, you know, take her bill and place it on the agenda, the Senator Tenorio's bill, when we meet with the medical community. So I'm asking that we not place that bill on this agenda now until such time then that we finalize the roundtable meeting with the medical community. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Any other speakers on this, or can we...
Mr., Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I appreciate the explanation that was given. I see no harm in placing this bill on the agenda. There could be no foul be called. We can continue to work with the medical community to see to the other needs that they see to be implemented as a matter of policy and law. With cooperation of the medical community and this legislature, we can effectively do pretty much anything. We have another session coming in November, but my concern is the fact that we have the ability to establish a qualifying certificate now with the existing bill, which allows for the qualifying certificate program to be given to those individuals in the medical community that have a critical need, and for the board to establish what those critical needs are. We know that there's a critical need with cancer, that's not debatable. We know that the Cancer Center was on the verge of closing as a result of not having a doctor. We need to make it more attractive for these type of professionals to come to Guam. I'm asking my colleagues to put this bill on the bottom of the second reading. And if the opportunity presents itself, and working with the medical community, from the time that we begin this session to the time that we end, if we can find some sense of agreement on what additionally needs to be placed on the bill, then se la vi, let's work with that. But I'm asking that we place this bill on the agenda, so we give this message not just to the people of Guam, but also this body, that this issue, especially dealing with the cancer patients on this island, and the many other critical needs that are afforded to the people of Guam, can be further addressed by the QC program. So I ask again, that we kindly consider the placement of this bill on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Since there is an objection, I'm going to call for the vote, so those who are in favor of placing Bill Number 10-30, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We now are on Bill Number 40-30LS.
Can I raise a point of order?
Yes, Senator Respecho.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a point of order in terms of how we're going to proceed in the second reading file, and also probably a point of information. As you know, Madam Speaker, it's customary that we've outlined, in this case, 35 bills, and we have a general understanding that if at some point we get to a bill in this, in the agenda, and either the author is not ready, or the author is not here, that we would move the bill to the side, and then at any time, the author can come back and say, "I now have the additional information, I'm ready," and then, so this, this, this process provides for, for more expediency, and so that we're not in a one-minute recess that lasts for more than one minute. So if we could just have that, continue to have that general understanding in how we handle and address Bill Number, the bills in the second reading file, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that, Senator Respecho. So, okay, since, I guess it would be much stronger if we put it then in the form of a motion, and so then those...
I move then, yes.
Yes, thank you so much. So, without any objections then, so ordered. The motion is that as we go down the line of bills, that if the author is not here, the primary sponsor of the bill is not here, that we just don't put it in the bottom of the file, that we continue on to the next bill, and then until such time that the author has returned, then we'll just pick it up where we left off, and then continue on again.
Do you care if you...
That's right.
You don't lose your place?
You don't lose your place at all. So when you come in, we would, and as soon as we, if we're...
Do you want to...
Well, suppose you step, step back, and you're right, and then we've continued on with the bills, and then when you come back, and as soon as we're done with that bill that's on the floor, then we would pick your bill up, and start with you.
Or are we not ready to do the motion?
Yes. Okay, so we're now on Bill One, I mean, Number One, Bill Number 40-30LS, and I'd like to recognize Senator Calvo. Oh, I'm sorry, before then, okay, because Senator Calvo's not here, so Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I move to, move Bill Number 40LS to the bottom of the second reading file, and discussions and in behalf...
Well, we have that motion, that we can just go ahead and skip it, and then keep going until he gets back, rather than putting it at the bottom.
My motion is to move it to the bottom.
But your motion is to...
To move it to the bottom of the...
I just thought maybe you didn't hear the, the discussion earlier, so, on that motion then, to place Bill 40-30 at the bottom of the reading file, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Bill Number 92-30COR, and I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, and good morning, colleagues. Oh, no, I have, I have. Madam Speaker and colleagues, good morning. Bill 92...
Wouldn't you make a motion first?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Speaker, to...
To accept?
To accept the substitute version for Bill 92.
Wait, I don't, no, no, we don't have the substitute version, we have now, I, I have a bill that says introduced by, so it's not a substitute version?
No, that was the original bill.
There is a substitute, okay.
Yes, there's a substitute.
We're going to take a minute recess until everybody gets a copy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you guys reading it? I thought it was supposed to be listening. Have you guys have... Huh? I thought we talked about...
I'm going to explain in a moment, Madam Chair. What I did is consolidated the amendments.
Amendment to substitute?
Yeah, this is actually, I'm going to make a floor amendment to substitute the original bill in its entirety with a substitute version.
I don't have the words for this.
The original version was not in the packet, I asked the...
Okay, pass it down. And then you have a substitute version.
No, I don't have it.
You're passing it down, you're waiting, you're passing it up.
No, that's not the substitute, that's the amendment. He should have substituted the bill, no. Ben hasn't.
Second session, Senator Guthertz, you're recognized on Bill 92.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Bill 92 was introduced with Senator Palacios and Senator Respecho as co-sponsors, and I want to thank them for being co-sponsors, supporting this initiative.
So, you want to make a motion to, to place it then on third reading?
I'm going, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Speaker, to move Bill 92-30 to third reading.
And you want to discuss it?
And I want to discuss it, thank you, Madam Speaker. The measure was introduced to restore certain functions of the Civil Service Commission. Bill 92 was heard on April 13th, 2009, and April 15th, 2009, and reported out of committee as substituted on May 26th, 2009. There was some discussion on the floor, if you recall, and concerns were raised regarding certain amendments in the substituted measure, and it was referred back to the committee at my request during that session. Since then, I have worked with the Civil Service Commission, the Department of Administration, and other HR professionals of our government, and the Committee on Labor, Committee on Public Structure, Public Libraries, and Technology. Together, we came to a general consensus that we would work with Bill 92-30 as introduced, and I thank the good Chairman of the Committee for his willingness to report the measure out as introduced. The Civil Service Commission and the Department of Administration are in support of the current measure, and have offered their amendments, which I will, in amendment form, now proffer as a substitute version of Bill 92-30 in its entirety. So, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to offer the substitute version of Bill 92-30 at this time, which has been distributed.
So, wait, wait, wait. So your motion then is to, this whole packet, right?
That's correct.
As a substitute of the original then?
Yes, there's 12 amendments, basically, in the substitute version.
So you're not going to do it section by section, is this correct?
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to explain it as we go through it.
No, no, I mean, we're going to have to deal with one bill or the other, so, but what you want us to do is to act...
I want to use the substitute version.
Okay, so then, so your, your motion now then is that you're going to provide then a substituted version?
Correct, Madam Speaker. For purposes of discussion.
Okay, but first, we're going to have to, to accept.
Yes.
Okay, so your motion then is to accept then the substituted version of Bill 92?
Correct.
Okay, so on that motion then, to accept, Senator Tenorio.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion to, to adopt section by section. I'm not willing to digest this entire thing in one fell swoop. It's in a complete replacement of the bill, so I, I move to replace it section by section. Substitute, to, to adopt section by section.
Yeah, but it, it, there are two very, you can't, you can't amend her amendment, we're going to have to, no, but we're, we're, hers is to accept the entire bill, so if you're going to do that, then we're going to have to, to vote down then her acceptance of the entire bill.
Okay, so, so I'll speak on the amendment, and I object to the amendment then. Madam Speaker, we're talking about the complete replacement of the entire bill, and without going through section by section, what the effect of the changes are, if the adoption of the entire section takes place without discussions of all those points, then it would be, in effect, a, a replacement and acceptance of it by the body, without justification of why each one of these sections were not changed or substituted previously. So I'm asking that we either adopt it section by section, or object to the amendment as it is.
Madam Chair, point of information, just a point of information.
A moment, since we're discussing then your, your motion, I can, you can all do that then as part of your, your closure, so...
Well, I was going to explain that I can discuss each section, I'm prepared to do that.
Okay, so you're going to withdraw your amendment then, and then this, as you, and still stick with the bill as introduced, and we go section one, and then you're going to add your amended version to section one?
Well, I can do that, if that's the desire of the body, or I can go through the substitute version and explain each section.
Well, that's the reason why we need to, to vote on this, whether one is we do it section by section, which is what Senator Tenorio is asking to do, your motion is to accept the entire substitute, substituted bill. So on, on that, on that motion then, Senator Calvo, you raise your hand.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I, I will also agree with a motion made by the previous speaker. Again, the, it may have been, I guess, if we were to suit the purpose of what the, the Senator offering this amendment is trying to do, there probably would be more wise or more prudent to do it either as a, as a substitute or amended by the committee, a bill as amended by the committee, but this is an amendment put on the floor, and, and again, it's... but this is an amendment put on the floor, and, and, and again, it's, it's close to, it's nine pages long, and again, if, if we're to make an amendment, and I, I tend to agree, if it's to be this process, uh, I think it's important that we, we deal with each change section by section, so again, um, ma'am speaker, this is fairly voluminous in, as an amendment, it's, it's the, it's the complete changing of a bill, and I would recommend, and I would go along with the earlier speaker, that we, if we were to move in this direction, that we divide the question and go section by section. Uh, thank you very much, ma'am speaker.
Thank you, Senator, as Senator Guthrie, if I, if I may, is that, um, if you look at the substituted version that, that you have, it is written as an amendment, uh, not as a substitute bill, so, um, I, it's up to you basically to, to make that decision, I know, and I can, I can call...
Well, ma'am chair, I'm prepared to go through it section by section.
So then you want to show...
So I will, I will, I will draw my original emotion and, and ask that...
And you still have the floor, so...
Yes, I'd like to move that we, uh, go through this section by section, ma'am chair.
Okay, and so, and there are no objections, and so...
Thank you, thank you very much. Uh, gentlemen and ladies of the legislature, the Civil Service Commission serves a critical role in the merit system of the government of Guam's employment practices, and they exist to protect both GovGuam and the employee. I need not remind some of you that in the late and wee hours, once upon a legislative budget session, the Civil Service Commission was stripped of much of its authority via public law 28-68. As a result, there is some debate as to the nature of investigations, and the role of the Civil Service Commission, and questions arise whether an investigation is deemed adjudicory or not adjudicory. As such, whistleblower complaints, furlough appeals, and some grievance processes have hanged in limbo, and if you ever have the opportunity to talk to government employees that are concerned about this, they have been very frustrated by the fact that they're not able to pursue these matters, uh, under the new system that's been in existence for the last two or three years, are very frustrated about it. Another troubling point is that the repeal of certain functions of the Civil Service Commission also caused a lack of uniformity in the application of the merit system with regard to hiring, promotions, transfers, and other personal actions. As a result, uh, the question of being fair and equitable have come under suspect, uh, in our government employment practices, and our government employees in many cases feel they have no avenue of recourse, and no avenue of defense. It is my belief that restoring the jurisdiction of the commission and clarifying certain functions of the Civil Service Commission are necessary, and will enhance our government's merit system, and will aid in the uplifting of the morale of all of our employees, and put into place proper procedures and controls to ensure that our civil service system operates the way it is intended to operate under the Organic Act. We need to restore the certain functions to the jurisdiction of the commission to the extent necessary in order to administer a uniform and comprehensive merit system, and to eliminate the strict demarcation of adjudicory versus non-adjudicory functions imposed by public law 28-68 and other laws. Ma'am chair, the, uh, bill and the amendments that I offer are based upon careful and prudent interaction and consideration of the agencies involved in our personnel system in the government of Guam, and I am prepared to discuss each section with my colleagues at this time. Ma'am chair, may I proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much.
So now you're gonna go through it section by section?
Yes, each section. In looking at the, uh, submittal of, uh, the amendments contained in each section, let me say that section one really doesn't change from the original, uh, version of the bill. So if there's no questions on that, I think we can go to, uh, section two. Section one is legislative findings and intent. Section two, ma'am speaker, deals with duties of the commission, section 4403. In section, uh, two, 4403, particularly section B, there is an amendment, and this amendment is necessary to simplify the language, and also to give the commission the specific authority to promulgate rules on the subject of adverse action appeals. The language that was added was, "The commission shall adopt rules and procedures to handle such appeals." The language that was deleted was, "Has not been hired through the competitive hiring procedures or the personnel rules of the government of Guam, as such, personal rules required at the time of the hiring of the employee, nor any." The strike-throughs are, are there. Are there any questions on section...
So, on, on that motion then, is to delete...
Delete, uh, the language starting, uh, line 19 with the word "has"?
Uh, well, see, because that's the substituted version, so we're gonna have to go to the original bill on page three, is to delete the words "has not" on line 13, down to line 16, ending with "any."
Correct.
Okay, so, and then, uh, to add "is an..."
Correct.
Before unclassified employee, that's the First Amendment.
Yes, ma'am speaker.
Okay, so on that motion, are there anyone who would like to speak on the motion? Senator, you're recognized.
Ma'am speaker, no, I just, uh, would like to ask the author, uh, how do we define unclassified employee? So, I guess by deleting, simply put, how do you define unclassified employee?
Unclassified employees are those that are not hired based on the merit system.
So is that then an employee who has not been hired through the competitive hiring procedures or the personnel rules of the government of Guam?
That is the translation, yes, normal translation.
So then I don't understand then why we're deleting that and replacing it, why we're deleting that definition, basically, of an unclassified employee, and then leaving an unclassified employee kind of hanging out there?
Well, the, uh, current role of the Civil Service Commission is to deal with the classified service.
I, I understand, I'm just, I, I, I'm not questioning the role of which class of services, all I'm saying is, we're saying they're not, they're, they don't deal with an unclassified employee, but that category is not defined, instead, what we did was we deleted the description or the definition of what is an unclassified employee, that's, that's my only point.
I see. Would you like to make a, a motion to include it, Senator Ada? I don't object.
Well, I guess then my motion would be to, uh, to, to restore that language in lines 19 through 22. 19 through 20, oh, 19 through 21, and I, so that then actually, we're saying that they do not, they will not hear an appeal of an employee who has not been hired through that competitive hiring, so that, you know, that, that particular class of employees could be an unclassified, could be whatever you want to call them, but we should probably just delete on line 22 where it reads, "nor any is an unclassified employee." That, that will be my, my, um, my motion.
Okay. Ma'am chair?
Senator Guthrie, I, I, I think it's important, and that's the reason why, that when you look at the amendment, makes it difficult to, for us to go back and forth, uh, because we're working with the original bill, which is on page three, where these, where these words, um, you know, are being stricken out now in your amendment, and that's where it's important for the, the members to see, to differentiate exactly which bills they're referring to.
Ma'am, just a point of clarification, that the...
Can I, can I, I'm, I'm gonna ask...
The amended version is exactly the same as the original, except for the changes.
I understand, so I think it's important that we take a brief recess so we can, uh, discuss this further.
Okay.
The legislature's back in session, Senator Guthrie, you're recognized.
Yeah, ma'am chair, in order to accommodate the concerns on the process, I'd like to, uh, have a little time to, uh, prepare something following the original bill, where the proposed amendments will be introduced one by one.
Senator Respecho?
Point of order, having, uh, heard that, ma'am speaker, I'm gonna ask if the, uh, author could, uh, agree to then move this bill to the side, and until such time, she has everything in order, uh, to come back to make her presentation.
Yes, Senator Guthrie, you want to go ahead and make that, uh, motion then?
Yes, uh, it won't take long, ma'am chair, but yes, I'd like, uh, to be able to move the bill, uh, to the side temporarily until I come back with the other document.
And to be able to move on to the next bill?
Yes, please proceed, thank you.
On that motion then, without any objections, so order, so the, the next bill on the agenda is Bill number 95, and I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Rector.
Thank you, ma'am speaker, boy, we're whipping through the agenda today, aren't we? Let me speak a little bit about Bill 95.
Can you make a motion first, please, to accept?
Could I, I, I moved to place...
And to place it, rather, to place...
Are we ready?
Yes, to place.
I moved to place Bill 95 on the third reading pile.
And you would like to discuss it?
And I'd like to speak on the bill.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you so much. Uh, Bill 95, uh, also known as the Model Community School Protection Act, is a bill that ensures that the idyllic school in the beautiful village of Yumatic, FQ Sanchez, remains open, fully funded, and fully staffed for the children of that village. You know, it's the only school on Guam that was designed by a famous architect, not only that, but it's a part of our historic trust, and they got up and testified that not only is it important to keep that, that school, keep that building in the possession of the government of Guam, but to keep it as a school as it was designed. Not only is that important, but the community down there realizes what a valuable and incredibly great school that is. Their test scores are through the roof, their children know each other, the staff know all the children, they know the parents, nobody walks on that campus without everybody knowing about it. Teachers know the kids as they go through, and they know their families. Administrators know each family and each thing that happens there. Their test scores, when we had the public hearing for this bill in the beautiful village of Yumatic, we actually, before we started, the, the school community got up and gave a bunch of awards to the students that scored high on the SAT-TIN test, which was the majority of the school, ma'am speaker. You know, I, I find it incredible, when, on our beautiful island, when we always say how important public education is, and how important our children are, and how important it is for there to be a good, high-quality public school system for all of our children, and the school that does the best is always the one with its head on the chopping block. Even when I sat on the first Guam Education Policy Board, the Guam Education Policy Board tried to close this school, because they thought it was too expensive. But fortunately, through my efforts and the efforts of the community standing up and fighting for their school, we managed to keep it open. Unfortunately, every couple of years, the bean counters that work with spreadsheets and look at education as numbers on an Excel file, as opposed to the quality of education we give our children, try to close that school down, because it costs a little more per student than the rest of the schools in the district. The trick here is not to reduce every school to the lowest common denominator, the trick here is we want to raise every school to the greatest denominator. Every student on Guam should have the quality education the kids at FQ Sanchez receive. Every student on Guam should have that quality of, of interaction between parents and community, and students, and teachers. Every school on Guam should have a quality community school like the people in Yumatic have for their children. While this bill doesn't address every school on Guam, all it addresses is FQ Sanchez. It doesn't give them anything more than they have now, all it does is make sure that no one takes anything away from this idyllic village by the sea. Ma'am speaker, I, I ask for all of my colleagues' support on this beautiful bill, and for this beautiful school in the village, thank you very much.
Senator Rector, on the motion to place on third reading, without any objections, Senator, tight agree of a question or a comment, I'd like to speak on the motion?
Thank you, ma'am speaker. Being a girl from the South, being always left behind, you know, realizing that sometimes when it comes to government functions and things like that, that the South is always left behind, the last to get assistance during typhoon, et cetera. I believe that this bill may put us in a situation where, once again, this legislature tries to get away with micromanaging situations and... this legislature tries to get away with micromanaging situations and duties of people that we entrust in. We have the Department of Education Superintendent. We have the Board of Education as well, to decide whether schools can stay open or close based on the ability to service all our children of Guam. I'm glad to see that there has been an attempt for something in the South that we've always been set aside as being the last people to respond to when there's a situation or crisis. But to allow the school open currently as it is is good, and it's being done. But for us to mandate it, that it be put, keep on, you know, staying open, is irresponsible on our side when we allow the Department of Education and the Education Policy Board to make these decisions. They have all the logistics. They have all the means. And Madam Speaker, as the Chairman for Education, you know as well that sometimes you have to allow them to lead. You give them the strings, the ability to do the things that are right, because they're there every day, working on education. What I really have a difficult time with, and it's unfortunate, that this section, where it has "B," Public School System Shall Continue to Keep FQ Sanchez Schools Staffed Fully in accordance with staffing patterns established by current collective bargaining agreements and/or board policy. Now, where is the intention here? To limit this school open based, based on that we allow collective bargaining agreements only for this school to stay alive? What if we don't do that? Then the school will fail? Let's say they don't have union members at that school. Are they allowed to keep open the school? Maybe, let's say, 20. I used to take pictures at a Yumatic Elementary School. I enjoyed it. I loved the staff, and the children are amazing, as well as Mariso Elementary. But to allow this small amount of employees there, let's say 50 people who are working there, and only 10 do not want to be in the union. So is this a reason to shut down the school? Is the intent of this bill really for the people of Yumatic, or is it different, another ploy to add collective bargaining? And if it's not allowed, then it won't go through. So, Madam Speaker, I'm going to have to rise in objection of this bill.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. On the motion, Senator Palashis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, at this point, I see no danger of any kind that the closure of the FQ Sanchez is now at stake under consideration. I think that issue is best debated and settled by the Board of Education, the body itself. And I understand there have been some recommendations, some assessment made of it, and they're dealing with it. My take is that they are not, at this point, prepared to close it down, and I do not see the need for Bill 95, I guess, to be considered by this body. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palashis. On the motion, are there any other speakers? So there's none, so I would allow the author, then, to do a close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The need for this, as we know, when there is just a off-island consultant that came on to our island, and one of the main suggestions of their little study was to close down this school. While it might not be under consideration now, we know it has always been, year after year after year. Everybody likes to wage war on the poor people of Yumatic, because maybe they think there are not enough voters down there to matter. I think there's enough citizens down there to matter, and I think there's enough children down there to matter, and enough families down there to matter. That's why I think we need to permanently, once and for all, make sure the school stays open for them. Now, let me talk about Section B a little bit. For somebody that doesn't understand what a collective bargaining is, and what the laws of Guam are, and what they relate to, in no way, shape, or form, does this mandate that anybody become a member of the union? It has nothing to do with that. All it says is that the ratios, the staffing patterns, and the ratios that are established in the current collective bargaining agreements, which are negotiated with the school board, so they're actually board policy when it comes to it, these are things that always need to be fully staffed. These are the important issues that we know affect the quality of education, which are class sizes. Paramount. Every time somebody wants to balance a budget in education, we know exactly how they do it. They start popping up class sizes. That's why the class sizes are mandated, both in the board policy and in collective bargaining agreements. Now, these things change from time to time, if the board changes, or they negotiate it, however it happens, but we want to make sure that the school remains fully staffed, that the children there get the same teacher-to-student ratio that every kid receives around the island. Now, do they get it now? Of course. That's the way it is. Is this, does this really need to be in the law? No, it makes really no difference. The law already covers this. Every school has to have, by law, the same staffing pattern as established by current collective bargaining agreements and by board policy. Some are covered in both. Some are covered in either one. So, does it really make much difference? No. It's a statement of policy. It's a statement of policy that these children shall receive the exact same high-quality education the kids all across the island. It's a statement of policy that says, maybe you've only got 50 kids in this school. Maybe you've only got 100 kids in this school, but gosh darn it, they deserve to have a school nurse, too. It's a statement of policy that says that they deserve their own library. It's a statement of policy that says, we believe in these children, and we believe that they deserve the best possible education that the people of Guam can give them. This has nothing to do with being pro-union or pro-collective bargaining. These rights already exist in the law. This has to do with this body, with this body telling the children of Yumatic, and the children of everyone on our island, that we believe in them. We believe in their quality of education, and we're going to support them, and we're going to stand up and fight for them. I ask all my colleagues' support on this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the motion to place Bill 95 in the voting file, a third reading file, there being no objections, so ordered. Oh, I'm so sorry. You're right. I'm terribly sorry. You're right. There was an objection. So, on the motion, then, to place Bill 95-30, C.O.R., then, on the third reading file, I'm going to call for the vote. Those, then, in favor of placing Bill 95 in the third reading file, please raise your hand. Motion then carries. Thank you, Senator. So, on the motion, I mean, on Bill Number 101-30, I'd like to recognize Senator B.J. Cruz.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I ask that the Bill 101 be accepted, and be placed on the third reading file for voting today, and I ask a few minutes to speak on it.
I'm sorry. I was writing something. Can you repeat?
I ask that we place Bill 101 in the third reading file, and I ask to speak.
Okay, I'm so sorry. Yes, please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Bill 101 is a very simple bill. Two legislatures ago, when we passed the Natasha non-smoking bill, we neglected to do one thing. We made sure that the late Natasha would be able to go, would be able to sit in the restaurant to eat comfortably without smoking. The only problem that we did not address at that time was we did not address the entrance to these public facilities that do not allow smoking. And unfortunately, you would have to go through the gauntlet of smokers that populate the outside of the door. In just about, almost any restaurant that you go to, it's hard to get into the restaurant without having to go through a smoke screen of smokers at the front entrance. And so, Bill 101 is attempting to address that, to make sure that if you're going into a non-smoking facility, that even as you go into the facility, that it would be smoke-free, so that young people who have smoking problems, like Natasha did, and other members of the community who wish to go out into non-smoking facilities, would be at least able to go from their cars, which is non-smoking, and into the facility, including government offices, which are now non-smoking, or at least currently under executive order of the governor. There's a smoking facilities in all Guam agencies. At the judiciary, it's the same thing. Those of you that have gone over to the court, they've cleared them from the front door, and they have a whole building, I mean, a building far from the door, so that you don't have to stand around with everybody smoking at the door as you try to get yourself cleared through security. And so, all Bill 101 is proposing is that there be no smoking within 20 feet. This is not, nothing revolutionary. You and I were in Washington earlier this year. In Washington, D.C., it's 25 feet from the front door of any building. Throughout the country, they have adopted similar legislation to make sure that people can go into smoke-free facilities without having to wade through a cloud of smoke at the entrance. And all I'm asking is that the members support 101 to fulfill the full intent of the Natasha smoke-free facility bill by making sure that they can get, people can get in into the facilities without having to fight through the smoke at the entrance. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Cruz. On the motion, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. You know, it's interesting that the bill number is 101. It reminds me of my college days, when it's like, non-smoking 101, or healthy 101, or Bill 101 effectively is the, sort of the rudimentary, basic sort of thing that goes toward our interest in trying to provide a healthier atmosphere for people who do not smoke. I was a smoker for many years, mostly on patrol out at night, and I'd get home at, I was about 21, maybe years old at the time, and I'd only be working first platoon at Ganet Precinct, and I'll be smoking in my patrol car, actually, until about 6 o'clock in the morning, get home, and not smoke the entire day, and then go back to work and smoke in the evening. And so, I was the only one exposed to the smoke. But I would also find that in the back of the precinct, you'd have all the smokers on the outside of the building, and you'd have this cloud of smoke. And when I decided to stop smoking ultimately, it became increasingly difficult for me to, because you're exposed to those smoking elements, and the damage that it could cause, and sort of, not a very healthy environment for people who are non-smokers. And whether you're walking into a restaurant, or you're walking into a public facility, or any other place, I think it's nice to be able to do so without having to worry about walking through this cloud that emanates sometimes in the absence of breeze that exists around those entrances. I would ask if the author, in his closing, would allow me to be the fourth co-sponsor of the bill, if he has no objection to it, so that I can, I want to put my name to this as well, because I realize there are a lot of people in the community that also want to see it further expanded, but this is a logical next step, and I appreciate the sentiments of the bill, and I stand in support of it, and I ask my colleagues to do the same. Suzu Smase.
So, on the motion into place, Senator Tenorio is the fourth co-sponsor, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rispio, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 101, and as the Vice Speaker observed, what the judiciary has done, I want to say that we all recognize that it's something that was done here in the legislature as well. Beginning of the term, Madam Speaker, we've put up no-smoking signs by the entrance and exit areas of the building, and we did it because it was basic common sense, and it was logical to think that if we're going to provide for a no-smoking environment pursuant to law, that also means the entrances and exits, because when we walk into our building, we don't want to walk, have to walk through an area that's filled with smoke in it whole. It defeats the entire purpose of the Natasha Act. I want to say, my observation, too, is that the governor's office has done the same. They do not allow for smoking within the immediate perimeter of the building. At any given time you go there, you see employees that are far away from the governor's office building, and so, they're also, in a sense, complying, already complying with this bill if it were passed. And so, I don't think this is something that the governor would object to. I don't think it's something that the Lieutenant Governor will object to, and I think it's something that I stand in full support of. I think it's something that we should also support as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispio. On the motion, Senator Palashis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, Bill 101, but I'd like to call attention to, on page one, line 13 and 14, I think this is out of place. Do you have one, two, and then, all money is collected from citation issued pursuant to this subsection shall be deposited in the police service funds, and then you have item three, four, five, and six. That's just an observation, but I rise in support of this bill, but I wonder whether the sentence beginning on line 13, page one, is out of place. That's all. Perhaps you should--
Would you like the author to respond to your question?
No, no, no. I'm just pointing that out, so.
Okay, so maybe in his closing, then, you'll be able to respond.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other speakers before, okay, Senator Cruz?
Could I just respond to that? The only amendment that I'm making, the Natasha Act was several pages long. I'm just putting in that one line. Everything else remains the same. Actually, we could stop at one. This bill would be just as effective if we just went 901, 90105, A is, all I'm amending is that line in A, so the rest of everything need not be in there, because we're just staying with the bill as, I mean, the law as it currently reads. All I'm adding is that, is that one line. And so, for, even for purposes of the bill, so that it doesn't, so that it doesn't confuse anybody that I'm trying to amend anything else, maybe we just stop, if I might strike everything below the colon, just so that everybody understands that's all that's being amended in this bill. Everything stays the same as is currently in the law. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that explanation. So, on the motion, then-- No, I mean, he's not-- No, no, but he, but he's, no, he didn't make that motion. He just said that-- I'm sorry? No, he's not saying, no. He just explained it, and he said it could very well be, just to even show and take all the others out, but that's not his intent. Okay, so I think that that is a technical, then, matter that could be addressed by a legal counsel. Yes, so we'll go ahead and then continue. Does anyone else would like to speak on the motion? Senator Munia Barnes, then I have Senator Rector, Senator Banglinen. Okay, so Senator Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Suzu Smase, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill Number 101, and if the author does not have any reservations, I'd like to know if I can be included as a sponsorship to this bill.
So, on that motion, then, for Senator Barnes to be the fifth co-sponsor, without any objections, so ordered.
And I just want to say, I stand in full support, and just, and for point of information, Madam Speaker, based on the technical support that was just given, this bill will just have subsection 90105, point prohibition of smoking in public places, and N at areas, on line six. Just for my clarification's sake, I just wanted to make sure that that's the way I read it now.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I do rise in full support of this bill, and I want to thank the author for letting me be a part of the sponsorship.
You're welcome, Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Rector, you're recognized on the motion. Senator Rector, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a, an interesting bill and an interesting concept, all in all. You know, I used to be a smoker for 20 years, and good gosh, I know how difficult it was to quit. Heck, my wife still smokes, and some of my best friends still smoke. And when I go out to a place that allows smoking inside, you know, I get home and the next day, you know, you smell your hair, you smell your clothes, and you're like going, ooh. But that being said, passing laws that just sound like a good idea but don't have any, any bang for the buck in them always concerns me. Um, I'm curious as to, this, all these other laws have been on the book, how many citations have actually been issued on this? I mean, this, this law's been on the books for quite some time, that you can't smoke in buses and elevators and taxicabs and restrooms and service lines and restaurants and public aquariums, et cetera, et cetera. Any building not open to the sky, sports arenas, convention halls, every place of meeting or public assembly during which a public meeting is in progress. These are pretty good laws, but have they been enforced up to this point? And, and actually, that's a, a question for the author of the bill. If I could get a little clarification on that, have we issued any citations on this?
Senator BJ Cruz, do you yield to the question?
I yield, Madam Speaker, and I'm willing to answer the question. The only problem is, I, I don't know the answer, but I do know that we are able to go into restaurants, and I'm, I'm noticing that there is, that it's being enforced. I'm not sure whether or not citations are being, I, I've even noticed that some bars have actually realized that it's better for their business that they, they, though it's not mandated by law, that they, they become non-smoking, because more of us are willing to go out and, and frequent them if they would have no smoking. So I, I'm not sure whether or not it's a need for legis, uh, for, for, for citations, but people are just realizing it's, it's actually good business.
Senator Rector, are you okay?
Okay, yeah, I, that was pretty much the answer, I thought. And it's, it's kind of interesting to me, and I, I, I'm in full support of this bill. Don't get me wrong, Madam Speaker, and, and anybody else get me wrong. But once again, in making sure that we have laws at work. I mean, we encourage people to leave buildings to go outside and smoke, which is a great idea, but on Guam, it rains a lot. And if the only awning is right underneath the, the building, and it's not, maybe it's only 10 feet away, that, I, I see that as, as potentially causing problems in the future. But all in all, I remember when California first passed the law saying that there's no smoking allowed indoors. And when I went back there, everybody was empowered to write tickets. If you were inside a bar, and I didn't realize I was a smoker at the time, and I lit up a cigarette, and I, everybody started freaking out and running around the bar and going, I'm going to write a ticket. I'm like, what, what the heck did I do? Right? And, uh, because everybody was empowered to enforce the law. And, um, maybe in the future, I can work with the author of this law, and we can find out a way to better enforce this, to make a healthier environment for people of Guam, because good laws are only good if we have good enforcement behind them. I rise in support of this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. On the motion, Senator Pangolinan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the bill. And it really, to me, I don't care. I don't care if it's never enforced, you know? Or I shouldn't say I don't care. It does not matter to me that it's to be enforced. I think that what matters to me is, as earlier said, there's a policy on the books. Number one, smoking and the effects of smoking is already undebatable. At a time there, we had the problem with tobacco companies and their massive advertising trying to convince us that smoking is good for you. Not just cool and sexy, it's actually good for you. And even with their billions, you know, science was finally able to come to its census and, and just take on these tobacco companies and their massive media companies, and prove to them, and prove to us, people like you and I, who have the ability to put in public policy that'll improve the health of our population. And secondhand smoke will come to that point where, again, it's already the scientific evidence with regards to exposure to secondhand smoke, and the effect that it has on your health of any other person exposed to it is already scientifically undisputable, or indisputable, that it is bad for your health. And in some instances, some people say it may even be worse than firsthand smoke. So to me, putting this in place, there's been a lot of self-regulation, especially really on the smoking issue here on Guam. And I want to give our community credit for that, because we have people in the business sector that now police the act itself, that they want to comply with what's in the books, and that the objective is not to write tickets. The objective of this law is not to collect money. The objective is to curb a behavior that exposes people around, people who smoke, from exposure to their negative effects of smoking. And that includes walking in and out of buildings. And, yeah, this is Guam, and it tends to rain, and that's why they kind of congregate close to the door, so when it rains, they jump in. But it just, you just wait. You wait to smoke until it's right time for you to smoke, until it's not raining and you can move 20 feet from the door. And people will adjust, and they have, and, and we've seen it. And so to me, the public statement, the public policy is, is the primary goal, and not the collection of money from fines. I'm not, I'm not concerned about that at all. I really am concerned about putting in the policy that will curb a behavior that negatively affects people around that behavior in which those people have no choice. You can't walk into another door. You can't be the one to walk into the back door or the side door. You should be able to walk into an entrance and not be exposed to these secondhand smoke by people smoking right in the entrances. I think it's good public policy, regardless of whether or not it's being enforced by our own government enforcement agencies, or it's being enforced by the people and establishments once they know what the public policy is, and then they self-enforce it. And we've seen tremendous success and strides we've made on Guam with regards to trying to lower the smoking population here on Guam. We're, we're, we're bad off. We're not anywhere near we should be. We're not anywhere near the rest of the nation is, but we're making improvements, and this is one of those areas in which we can further improve the conditions of the residents of Guam by passage of this law with regards to protecting them from secondhand smoke. So I stand in full support of the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Pangolinan. Any other speakers? I understand, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Uh, Mr., I was going to shock everybody, so I'm going to stand up here and object, and I'm going to object because I wasn't even a co-sponsor, because last year I didn't introduce this bill, and it got nowhere, and, and I was contemplating doing it again this year, but I want to, to say that I do support it, and I, and I thank you for stepping forward. You beat me to the punch, and, but it's still okay. I, I'm still supporting the bill even though I'm not the sponsor or co-sponsor. Uh, Mr. Speaker, I know that the previous speaker at first was saying that he doesn't care, but I think what, but after you heard, heard his statement later on, we all know that he really does care, because it really does matter. And I only say that because when, when you think of how all these yeses started in the past, there used to, I used to go to the movies, and, and you see this chunk of a man up there on a horse, smoking, and it just seemed to be the sexiest thing to do. And, and, and for the most part, men were the smokers. And then women started then to also think that now it's kind of sexy to start smoking, and then it, we look cool, you know, we are in the crowd, all that. Everybody wanted to, to belong somewhere somehow. But then, again, they have realized much later in life that, based on all the studies, that it's not good after all, and many have made the, the attempt to, to stop, and, and many also are finding it very difficult to stop. And, and I say that because I, my own son smokes, and, and I don't smoke, and I'm asthmatic, and I can't be around individuals who smoke. Uh, and I've seen my son struggle time and time again to stop, and then he starts, and then he's, you know, and then he stops again, and, and I understand how difficult it, it is for them to, to, to sometimes kick the habit. The one thing I think is really, really good is that, oh, when, when we were debating this bill, is that we, there was so much objection to get it into restaurants, because we were so fearful that the tourists will no longer come to Guam. We were fearful that the businesses will then lose money, because people won't go to the restaurants anymore. But times have changed, the par, there's a paradigm shift, attitude has changed, the data is out there, and I think more importantly, to me, is that smokers have become very considerate of those then who are non-smokers and would not smoke in front of them, or blow the smoke in front of their faces. In the past, it used to be the attitude where, who are you to tell me not to smoke? But I think that that has changed now, and I, I thank the, the smokers for being very sensitive to those who are non-smokers and those who can't be around smokers. So I, I think that that is a good thing, and I think that when habits start, start to change, and when attitudes start to change, then you're going to see that as individuals, we too will start to change, and that is true in all aspects. And if we can start with something that can be harmful to our health, especially with smoking, just imagine what other things, again, could actually come as a result of just making that, that change in, in our attitudes and our habits. So, Mr. Speaker, I want you to know that even though as number 15, I do support this bill. Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, in, in recognition of the fact that you did introduce this in the last session, I would have no objection to a motion to place your name at the very, very top as number one. And if someone would make that motion, I would approve them.
What is your motion?
Madam Speaker, based on the request, actually, in relation from the, the Vice Speaker, the Senator from, from Piri, and at his, his request, I move that you be placed as the number one sponsor of the, of the bill.
As the what?
As the number one sponsor. He said we're at the top.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, ordered. On the motion, if there's anyone who would like to speak on the motion, there being none, then I'd like to ask the author if he would like to close, or do you want to place it out. So on the motion to place, then, a third reading, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Thank you very much. We're now in Bill Number 108-30COR, and I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Pangolinan. You are recognized.
Thank you very much, Suzu Smase, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill Number 108-30COR substituted by Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens be placed in the third reading file.
You want to accept?
Yes, move to accept the.
On the motion, then, to accept, accept.
I guess if it comes through the Rules Committee, it's already been accepted, so, but.
Okay. I have no, no objection to that at all, so. And so the motion then now to place?
Uh, Bill Number 108-30COR substituted by Committee by Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens be placed in the third reading file.
And you would like to speak on it?
Yes, thank you very much.
Please then proceed.
Thank, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill Number 108-30 is a bill that would reestablish and revive the Civilian Police Review Commission. The Civilian Review, Police Review Commission was originally passed into law with some of the members of the commission being appointed by the appointing authorities. However, the governor at that time decided not to implement and establish the commission to the point where it would be able to meet and function, and therefore, any progress on the establishment of a civilian police review commission was stymied by the action of the executive branch in not putting together the commission. And so the commission, by operation of a latter law that was passed by this body, in which if a board or commission had not been, had not met and established itself and began operating within a certain time limit of the formation of that commission, then the commission would dissolve automatically. And so what happened was, we had the Guam Police Review Commission that was established in law, was not able to meet within the six months, I believe, of that public law, that automatically then dissolved these boards and commission. And so this bill would revive that civilian review commission by amending the code to reestablish it, and then some changes were, were made and recommended by the committee with regards to the operation of the commission. The majority of the change is in the areas in which the Guam Civilian Police Review Commission would be able to review the behavior of individuals or complaints of our men in blue as they interact with the public. And so some of those changes were made, and that was to delete, to, um, on page four as outlined by the committee amendments, was to delete the, those areas in which we thought, at this time, based upon public testimony, may bog down the commission more in the day-to-day operations, instead of being function, functioning as a kind of a big-eye view, a, a, a bigger-picture view of the interaction between our men in blue and the, and the general public. And so it recommends that we delete the inappropriate language or attitude harassment areas as being too many of, maybe subject the community, commission to too many day-to-day operational stuff that really should be taken at the command level, rather than at this larger policy level. The commission is not meant to foster any kind of animosity within our community between our law enforcement, in this case, GPD, and the public that they serve. It really is meant, if functioning correctly, when put into place, would build better confidence that the behavior of our men and women in blue, as we know it, majority, if not 90%, 95% of the time, they follow the procedures established by law and established by the general orders of the department. And generally, they have good public relations and interaction with the public. The enforcement of the law is, is unbiased and fair, but you have people who transgress and go beyond those issues. And what occurs is that this few acts taint the entire department, and there is no process at this time in the Internal Affairs Division that is exposed to the public, so that the public can see that the police department, in fact, handles these complaints seriously. They investigate them, action is taken upon the offending officers, and that discipline is, is doled out to these individuals. But you can't see that, you don't know that. The public doesn't get to see that and experience that. So the tendency is to think that it's all a big cover-up, that they stick together, and therefore, it doesn't do any good, and the public's confidence begins to wane with regards to the police department and its operations. And so this would add another layer of independent outside set of eyes that can look at these situations, that the. situations, that the public can go to themselves and not feel intimidated that, you know, they're complaining to insiders that have a vested interest in protecting the inside. And that the public on the outside becomes the victim, rather than, I mean, rather, the public on the outside becomes a victim of this shield that everybody kind of feels exists there and we can't see what's going on. And this would allow us to get our own set of eyes, there's as members of the public, to verify and see for ourselves, through them, that the police department is in fact operated in a manner that does not condone any behavior that goes beyond the appropriate behavior of these men and women who protect and serve us. And so, that would be the major changes. I wanted to make one minor change, Madam Speaker, and that would be on page four, under quorum. I would say, it currently reads, beginning on line three, quorum, "A majority of the members of the commission present shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business and the concurrence of a majority of the members present shall be necessary to make any action of the commission valid." I'd like to amend that to just strike the word "present" on line three. So, "A majority of the members of the commission shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business."
On line seven? Line seven?
Oh yeah, now I'm just starting with that line.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, so, on the amendment then, on page four, line three, to strike the word "present", on that amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator Panglinen, you want to continue?
Thank you. And then, "No action shall be taken at any meeting or hearings unless a quorum is present." So, that would... Oh, and then on line five is where I want to strike that other "present," so that, "and the concurrence of a majority of the members shall be necessary."
Okay, so, on that motion then to strike "present" on line five, are there any objections? Senator Ada, you have a question?
Madam Speaker, just if the author would yield. With the amendment that's just made, I thought that one of the, one of the basic problems is that, I believe this is a seventeen...
Seventeen-member.
Oh, it's a seven-member committee?
Seven.
Oh, it's a post. My mistake.
Okay, thank you, Senator Ada. So, one moment, I want to make sure that the chair, the author... So I'd like to confirm with the authors that on page four, line five, that you want to also delete the word "present."
That's right, on line five.
On line five.
And that really is so that, we need six to conduct a meeting, or four to conduct a meeting, because it's a seven-member commission, right? But we don't want three members to be able to act. We want that four, the minimum of four. So that's the intent.
So on the motion then to delete the word "present" on line five without any objections, so ordered.
And that's my amendment.
You started to speak for line seven, but that's not...
No.
That's fine.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I want to thank the committee on Public Safety and Law Enforcement for the work that they've done on this, of course, in reporting the bill out and working with us to make the amendment that was brought to our attention as being beneficial to the operation of the commission once it gets established by the amendments that are offered. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Palacios on the motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I sincerely and certainly rise in support of Bill 108 as amended, I mean, as substituted by the committee during the markup. Involved were the Guam Police Department and, of course, the Office of the Attorney General. If one would read the legislative findings and the intent, it is very clear there why we need to reestablish this, even though it had not been activated during its lifetime in the past. That does not mean that that erased the need for attention on this issue. I think this Bill 108, after we pass it and sign it into law, it will only promote, of course, and preserve public confidence and respect for the Guam Police Department. It is for the people of Guam, for the public out there to know that if they have grievance against a police officer or any member of the Guam Police Department, that there is a process by which they can be heard. This Bill 108 will ensure that. I'd like to point out that one of the addition here in the markup is that, is an item, actually the last amendment, which is a new item on page five. And just to bring to the attention that, beginning on line nine on page five, this is a new item in this, and I think this is just for the bill because upon review of Chapter 78, which is the intention of this bill to reestablish, I feel that there's a need to again review that one more time after we reimplemented it. And that's why this Section 5 of this bill, on page five, is just that upon the enactment of this bill into law, then immediately, of course, following the reestablishment of the commission, that the commission shall review Chapter 78 in its entirety and submit its recommendation for the legislature to consider, meaning that if there need to be maybe an amendment at that point, then we can consider it however as it is. And again, let me go back on line 12. In particular, we would like the commission to review, of course, and consider for office space and budgetary need. That was one of the problems identified, I think, during the markup hearing, that the commission really was never funded and never had a place to meet. And so, these are the things, and what would be the implication of a determination by the commission that may result in an adverse action? Would the commission be a witness to such action, which ultimately will be taken by the chief of police and so? At any rate, the bill will reestablish Chapter 78, and the commission, it would do good upon reestablishment of the commission to review that. That's a new item in that. Otherwise, the original bill was intact, except for the removal of some of the violations or complaints, which currently is under the purview of the commission, that that can best be dealt with internally to the internal affairs and thus cutting down the subject areas that the commission would have to give attention to, and give it more time to look into some serious allegations and some serious issues. And for that, I rise in support. And I'd like to request, of course, the author of the bill, if I can be the second co-sponsor of this bill, I like this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion then to place, as Senator Palacios is the second co-sponsor, without any objections then, so ordered. Senator Tenorio, you're recognized on the motion.
This is Marcy, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the intent and the goals of this commission. It's kind of interesting that the author of the bill originally had appointed me as a member of this, which was never constituted. And one of the interesting aspects of this is that it really is a hybrid of legislative and executive appointees, and also had the members from the mayor's council, and I think one from the Guam Bar Association, which ensures that we have the legal expertise. There's a number of different concerns that I have. One was dealing with the finances, because, you know, as a member of the Guam Police Department for many years, and my fellow men and women in blue, Senator Blas, Senator Guthberts, and of course Senator Palacios, and myself, all have been down this road of dealing with investigations. It was once told to me, you know, you're doing your job when you get a complaint filed against you, because the nature of the work that we do, there's many shades of gray between, frankly, what is perceived and what is reality. And this is true in the eye of the beholder when you're dealing with excessive force. This law, if enacted, will in fact change the composition of, not the board itself, but what the board is allowed to review. And as was articulated previously, it's limited to, number one, use of excessive or deadly force; two, injuries to or death of a person while under the custody of the Guam Police Department; new, number three, discrimination in the provision of police services, or other discrimination, excuse me, discriminatory conduct on the basis of sex, race, color, ethnicity, creed, religion, national origin, sex, sexual preference, disability, or age, or other violations of civil rights; four, theft; five, any other crime or misconduct which constitutes a felony or felonies under the laws applicable to Guam; and number six, any other crime or misconduct involving more than one employee. So, what you're really having here is, we know that we have an internal affairs component of the Guam Police Department, which has existed for as long as I've known the police department to exist here in Guam, and have been a part and associated with that law enforcement function. The police officers who are brought to bear to answer questions are investigated by that Internal Affairs Division, and to certain degrees of success, some people feel that that's not thorough enough, or that I've been told that it's called an abyss. That these general characterizations of the Internal Affairs component of the Guam Police Department clearly falls, I think, on the disfavor of those people who work within that division. I myself have been one of those people working in internal affairs. It's not one of the most coveted positions in the police department, but truly is a position of same esteem and honor, like many other police officers that work not just in the police department, but other agencies, Department of Corrections, other agencies, Port Authority, who also have the sometimes unsavory appointment of that position, or having the responsibility of investigating one own's peers. But the point that I'm trying to get to is that not only do these people conduct their investigations with the discipline and standard operating procedures, which is, in keeping with the highest standards of police professionalism across the nation, and especially across Guam, but they have an inordinate number of cases, and they have a very relatively short window in which to conduct those investigations. It's 60 days from the time the management knew or should have known when a final adverse action has to be taken, or some disciplinary action which falls below that of an adverse action, which can be a letter of censor, reprimand, or something of that nature. And the crux of what I'm getting to, Madam Speaker, is that there's a lot of work involved in the Internal Affairs Unit. There's a lot of work involved in legal unit, which is directly tied to internal affairs, and that the highest ranks and highest echelon of management within the Guam Police Department have the responsibility to ensure that these things are done in accordance with the laws and, of course, the Civil Service Commission, and the findings and rulings, not just from the Civil Service, but also from the judiciary. With all of that information, and with all of the complaints that come to the Internal Affairs Division, I think that this commission is going to be not simply a commission of seven members, three from the executive branch, two from the legislature, one from the mayors, and one from the attorney, then the bar association. We're talking about a staff that's going to be required, talking about money, office place. I frankly think this is going to be probably one, it's going to be a decent-sized organization. At the end of this bill, the provision calls for review in a new Section 78-126 of Title 10, Chapter 78, GCA. And that says that upon enactment of this bill into law and immediately following the reestablishment of the commission, the commission shall review Chapter 78 in its entirety and submit its recommendations to the legislature within 60 days, after 60 days. So, not within, but after 60 days. I'll probably make an amendment to change that within. In particular, because otherwise it's an open window. In particular, the commission shall review 78-119, shall consider the office space, budgetary needs, and shall consider the implication of its actions on the Civil Service Commission's adverse action procedures. So, what I'm driving at, Madam Speaker, is that this commission will be not just merely a once-in-awhile sort of gathering of people. You're talking about an independent investigation. You're talking about people who have to have the expertise of an investigator within many of the highest levels of the public safety apparatus that we already have. People have the skill sets to be able to do surveillance, to be able to discern whether or not someone is lying, to be able to in fact find fact, and then return those facts and findings to the chief of police. There was also a issue raised by the legal counsel that talked about the ability for the chief of police, when it talks about, when the complaint is sustained, the findings are returned to the chief of police, the chief of police shall provide the commission with a written explanation of the reason or reasons for his or her disciplinary decision. And then it says, "In any case in which the commission disagrees with the decision of the chief of police, the commission may investigate the matter further and shall determine the disciplinary action to be carried out by the chief of police. Such decision by the commission shall be deemed final and binding and not subject to reversal by the chief of police." These are very, very powerful powers that this commission has, and in fact, has quasi, not even quasi, executive powers to carry out disciplinary actions against employees if the chief of police, him and herself, or herself, decides not to carry out those powers, or that disciplinary action as it deems necessary. So this is a commission with teeth. It is going to be required, in my opinion, to have the resources, financial and otherwise, to ensure that it's able to carry out those responsibilities. And in my opinion, you may in fact see a substantial reduction in the complaints that go to the Internal Affairs Division of the Guam Police Department. This will be the new internal affairs. But most of the cases that deal with all of the conduct issues, most of the conduct issues, I think, fall under the regime that is envisioned here. Any other crime or misconduct which constitutes a felony. If excessive force is used against an individual by a police officer, it's a felony. And conversely, if an individual uses force or attacks a police officer, it's also a felony. So this is true in both directions. So, that, Madam Speaker, is one of the highest volumes of complaints that the Guam Police Department has. Use of excessive deadly force, injuries, happens all the time. Madam Speaker, we're talking about, and again, don't misconstrue what I'm saying to be an objection to this, because I understand that there's an interest in trying to ensure that the credibility and the integrity of the police officers is held above reproach. We're trying to make sure that those people who in fact do violate their cause, who do violate their oath of office as a police officer or a peace officer, carry out that responsibility to the highest level, to the highest professionalism. And that's true to me, as it was to Captain Palacios, to all the other police officers who have gone to the police academy and have been deserving of carrying that badge. So I want, I just want to make it sure it's clear that this is going to be probably a pretty beefy commission, and it's going to require resources from the legislature. Otherwise, we're not going to effectively accomplish what we're setting out to do. So, I rise in support of this commission. I rise in support of the reestablishment of it. I envision that ultimately, we will see a recommendation to finance this commission to a substantial degree. And I do want to make that one recommendation, I just saw it as I was reading it to you. And the amendment is on page five, under the Section 5 review, on the line 12, just before the word 60, replace it, "within 60 days," or "no later than," that's probably better, "no later than 60 days." So it will read, "Upon the enactment of this bill into law and immediately following the reestablish of the commission, the commission shall review Chapter 78 in its entirety and submit its recommendation to Elestra Taranguan..." "with no later than 60 days," "within no later than 60 days." So it's "within no later than 60 days."
So the amendment then is to strike out "after" and put "within no later than"?
Yes. And the reason for this, Madam Speaker, is I don't want it to be an open window. In effect, that's what it is, because after 60 days is in perpetuity. So you give them 60 days to review it, and within that 60 days, no later than... So you give them 60 days to review it and within that 60 days, no later than 60 days to give us the feedback.
I'm just kind of curious, Senator, I know you have both, but it could be one or the other, but you want to put both?
Yes, use within.
Within. Okay, so the amendment then, strike out after, replace it with the word within, that's line 12 on page five.
It goes the same thing.
Are there any objections? No objections then? Oh, wait, you have a question?
I object.
Oh, you object? Okay, so then those who are in favor then of the amendment, please raise your hand.
Can we, can we get an explanation of why the objection?
Yes, you may then, so you just raised your hand and that was it. So yes, you may speak then on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, I rise potentially in support of the amendment, I, just within 60 days. To me, having, having worked with the Civil Service Commission and rules and regs and personnel rules and regs over and over and over again, this is a pretty complicated matter we're going to be working on here. And it's, I mean, it's actually a really complicated matter. And knowing how understaffed the Civil Service Commission is currently and how understaffed the police department is currently, I worry that they're going to be able to get it done in 60 days. As crucial as it is, we want to make sure that they do a good job at this because of the implication it has with not just the lives of police officers but everybody in the community. So I would like to proffer an amendment to the amendment to change 60 days to 120 days. So now it would read after 120 days.
Within?
Or within 120 days, excuse me.
Okay, so there's an amendment to the amendment on the rector amendment which is to then delete 60 days and increase it to 120 days. On the amendment, are there any speakers? There are no objections then to that amendment, so ordered. So we're back to the amendment within 120 days.
That's fair.
Senator, are there any speakers? Now on the amendment to the amendment, none?
On which side?
So it should read then on line 12, within 120 days. Are there any objections to that amendment? No objections and so ordered. Is there anything else?
I'll just, I'll just finish, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you very much for the opportunity to, to work with, with of course my colleagues here on the floor on this. I, when, when we go through this process of establishing a commission especially as important as this one, it gives me cause for serious contemplation about what the effect that this will do within the police department itself. And that was some of the, some of the things that was brought out during the public hearing on this is that, that the police department is singled out, especially the Guam Police Department, as lacking the trust or the confidence. Perhaps this in fact will establish more of that confidence. I'm, I'm sure that the police department can use its internal affairs personnel in other capacities as investigators or patrol officers or investigators in some other form. And I envision that with the decrease in the crime or the allegations of misconduct to the internal affairs component, there will be an ultimate reduction in the total personnel assigned to that. But that reduction will come at a cost I think that we're all going to have to come to terms with when this legislature is confronted with a budgetary cost because this, this will, there's no way to round it. If this is going to be effective, it's got to be effective through a establishment of a budget, an annual appropriation from the legislature to ensure that the, the purposes envisioned in here are in fact within the authority and the, the unbiased and disconnected, impartial investigations of people who are not within those agencies. Because that, in, in the way that I read the, the long legislative intent here is, is in fact, findings and intent, is to try to make sure we restore the confidence of the people of Guam and that means that the confidence is not embedded in the current system that exists within the police department to conduct a policing of its own. The police, to police themselves has come under scrutiny and has come to do reestablishment of this commission. And, and so I too rise in support of the bill. I do, I do cringe at the thought of the cost of this because it will be a pretty substantial price tag associated with this. Thank you, Madam Speaker. But you know, it's kind of hindsight, you know, cost of integrity and cost of the commission goes part and parcel with the confidence of the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. On the motion, Senator Guthert, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, I fully support this bill. As Senator Tenorio said, some of us in this hall have had experience in law enforcement at the Department of Public Safety and the Guam Police Department. And I do think it's important to have an independent commission available to guide some of the issues that develop at the department. I think that there was an effort a number of years ago to do this. I was very sad that it didn't proceed to be implemented. But as our island grows larger with its population, as the police function becomes more critical to the well-being of this community, we've got to make sure that we have a police commission in place that can assist in ensuring top quality performance and accountability in the department. So I stand in full support of this measure and would be pleased to be a co-sponsor should the main sponsor wish me to be. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthert. Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, as a former law enforcement officer and one who's investigated many police officers in his time too as well, I can recognize and I can understand the intent and the need to be able to establish credit, to, to ensure, to reestablish the credibility of the Guam Police Department. Or should I say all law enforcement on Guam? Because you know, I have to bring up one of the concerns that was brought up by my good friend and former psycho mate from Gigo, in that, for lack of a better word, we're just targeting the Guam Police Department. When there are other police entities too within our government of Guam structure, there's airport police, there's commercial port police, there are other entities throughout the government of Guam that although their primary function isn't policing per se, they have law enforcement powers such as the marshals and the Attorney General Investigators. There are other individuals that we require, we require ma'am, in our, as their duties to carry firearms and in, carrying out their duties, they may have to resort to it. That they're required to carry badges. They're required to say that they're law enforcement, sure, they're required to say that they're police. And you know, if we're going to do this to the Guam Police Department, then I'm concerned of whether or not there's going to be an equal, we're going to be equal in as far as our disposition of the justice that's, that's necessary. Furthermore, I'm quite concerned too of the, of the powers that we're going to be provided to the commission and the responsibilities that the commission is going to have. And I went through the, the original bill, you know, the special investigator and the special prosecutor. I say all this because let me go back to what I said earlier when I, when I first started. I've investigated a number of police officers. And when I say police officers, I'm not just talking about the Guam Police Department, I'm talking about officers, law enforcement officers from other entities. And one of the, the first and foremost thing that I need to be worried about is you're investigating an individual who is allowed and is authorized and is trained on the firearm. And so it takes a little bit more than just appointing a special investigator to be able to investigate this. There are other safety factors that you've got to consider. So there may be a need to hire more than just one person. There may be a need to have, to employ the utilization of an officer of the same department that you're investigating. And so, you know ma'am, although I can, I can appreciate the concern that's being expressed and maybe the need to be able to bolster our ability to be able to, to, to police.
Senators, please. You can take a conversation outside, focus on the present speaker. Sorry, Senator Blas, you may continue.
I, I'm probably going to be a little bit more attuned or akin or accustomed or even more acceptable of maybe this commission having the role of an oversight or an advisory or clearinghouse or some role of being able to look into the investigations being conducted already by the internal affairs. So that, that way we can ensure, yes, and if the concern is, we want to make sure that the public, you know, is confident in this thing, then that, the commission will have that, will serve in that capacity. Other things that, another thing that comes to mind here is, my concern here is, if we're going to do this just for the Guam Police Department and we're going to set up the promulgation, the regulations as to how and when these things can be conducted, what about, and earlier today we were talking about these civil service, what about the civil service protections of these officers that are going to be investigated? Is it going to be changed? Well, that poses then a problem when it has to be administratively adjudicated or even Then who then also will have the legal responsibility for the decisions that the commission is And so those are some of the questions I still have in my mind, Madam Speaker. And I'll continue to relook at the original bill, the original law that was repealed. But, and maybe there, there is a way to be able to do this. Again, like I said, have the commission look over the work that's being done by the internal affairs or by the department in investigating the officer. As opposed to giving that commission the responsibility of conducting that. So I'm, I'm still unsure as to where I stand on this thing and I'll listen intently to the discussions and deliberations from my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. On the motion, I'd like to recognize Senator Espada. Then I have Taite Gueye and Senator Rector.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, much like the previous speaker, my friend from Baragata, I have some reservations about the bill. Now, I don't have reservations about the intent because I, I understand what it's trying to accomplish. However, whether this bill will really accomplish it is still not established in my mind. In the legislative findings and intent, basically there is a line that says, "Those officers who demonstrate signs of aberrant behaviors must be dealt with in a timely fashion." However, if you go down that legislative intent, it goes on to read that the Guam Police, the Guam Community Police Review Commission, which is, which is seeks to reestablish, was abolished because of the fact that it failed to meet in over 12 months. So it seems that, well, we're saying we need to have some process in which timeliness is definitely addressed. And yet, when this commission was established before, it failed to meet within 12 months. And so the question then becomes, why did it fail? Is it because of the lack of funding?
Point of information, Madam.
Please state your point of information.
The commission did not meet because the governor refused to appoint members to the commission. So the Guam Bar appointed members, the legislature representative who was responsible for making appointments appointed a member, but the governor failed and refused actually to name any additional members so that, so there was never any quorum established or nomination submitted.
Thank you for that information. Senator Espada, you may continue.
Well, thank you for that information because then it gives actually some weight to the previous argument by the previous speaker in terms of the role that this commission should take. Perhaps, perhaps it should be not be on the front end of any investigation and basically replace the internal investigations unit within the Guam Police Department, but maybe again, like the previous speaker stated, to oversee what actions are being placed and what other determinations and, and resolutions come to any actions. And maybe that is the role of this, should be the role of this board. Because when you really think about it, when we start talking about appointing members of the community at large to such a difficult situation, and it is a very difficult situation. I mean, I say that just as, as having been appointed to the Committee on Ethics for this legislative body, and that's just to determine things that are happening within here, the 15 members. When you start talking about having people within the community, you know, out there to make determinations on, on complaints on police officers without any pay, mind you. I mean, nothing in this bill says any of the members are going to be paid anything. It's hard to fathom that, that these members of the community could actually come together and make that quorum for the specific purpose of continually dealing with any complaint. And I would imagine there would be a substantive number of complaints coming in, whether they're justified or not, and would keep that commission busy. And will there really, so the question then becomes, will it really be a body that could take on the responsibility it's given in light of the fact that first of all, it has no budget? It would seem to me that if you're going to set up something like this, you would have already kind of contemplated and established what the minimum budget would be going forward because yes, within the law that we're trying to re-implement, it says you can have your own office space, you can have this, you need prosecutor or investigators, you need this and that, this and that. To start off with zero budget would seem to be almost, give a sense of hopelessness at the very onset because you're working from less than scratch. You're working with cases that are going to be coming in anyway. Once this law is enacted, once those members are in, they're going to start receiving a lot of complaints and yet they have no budget with, with, with which to function. So, and again, you're dealing with people who are not getting paid for this capacity. So that means they're putting in time in to this effort, which is a very daunting effort, after their full eight-hour, 10-hour workday, whatever it may be. And so you kind of wonder, can that really transpire? Ideally, it would be nice, but realistically, can it really happen? Without at least giving them some foundation from which to establish themselves. Again, taking a look at the budget issues, maybe we need to identify that now before we commission them or at least, at least at the same time that we give them these broad powers. powers. I have reservations, again, funding, the pay, the fact that they're, and, and the fact that also that they're going to be independent, and how much power do we really want to give them? But more than that, like I said, the intent of this bill, as it's specified in this legislative intent, is to make the fa-, uh, the process more timely. And yet, as we've seen in the past, that did not occur, for whatever reason, whether it was because the governor did not appoint, or, or maybe going forward because there are no funds to go, to go forward i- in a timely fashion. And the more time it's going to take to review the law and to make recommendations, the more complaints will file, will, will build up within the files, and then they would have to have backlog. So I'm not really sure that this, and although I appreciate the intent, I'm not really sure this is the sagest way to approach this solution without considering the other aspects, and that is funding, as well as the members, as well as perhaps employees and their requirements. So, Madam Speaker, I too, like the previous speaker, am not sure just yet on how I intend to vote on this bill, but I will be open to further discussion. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much Senator Espada Don. Senator Tai Tui on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I saw your hand up. Senator Richter, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, what a, what an interesting concept. You know, this, this is really, when it comes down to it, a labor issue. Because police officers are hard-working men and women that do an incredibly difficult job for the people of Guam. And the, the establishment of this commission creates kind of a bit of a dilemma, I mean, when it comes to it. And, and one of the things that, that we worry about is that we're going to hurt their rights under the Civil Service Commission, and hurt their rights and their protections that are given to them like every other employee of the public structure. Now, that being said, it also gives them rights. As, as we know sometimes, that especially in our, our small community of Guam, it's quite common for the media to try and convict somebody well before they have ever had a trial or any form of adjudication. And for police officers sometimes, I mean, we've all heard it said by the internal investigation method that, that currently exists today for them, somebody may accuse them of inappropriate behavior, and it goes by a trial of their peers. And of course, that leads to, what does that lead to? It leads to the public worrying about the true justice being done. I mean, it's just like when the AMA reviews fellow doctors, they almost never find the doctors are guilty of anything inappropriate, or at least that's what the public perceives. It's just like the Bar Association being the, the sole adjudicatory body of attorneys. How often do they actually sanction their own members? So, it, it becomes a bit of a worry like this, and I, I think this is something that this commission, I, I think this is something that this commission is going to help solve. I think that this is going to allow police officers to be fully vetted, not just by a, a body of their peers, but by a community board that doesn't have a vested interest in their, in the police force. And I think that's really important. I mean, I, I'm tired of watching people being convicted by the press. I'm tired of watching people not get the justice in getting their name fully cleared when it comes to these things. And with that in mind, I have a, an amendment to this, to this bill. On page four, line 19, they deleted harassment. So that the only authorities and duties of this commission, currently the way the bill is written, is to use of deadly force, injuries to a person in custody, and discrimination. Well, I don't think that's enough. So, yes, so my motion is to restore number three and make harassment one of the duties of the commission, which is on line 19.
So on the, um, the amendment, then on page four, line 19, to reinstate the word harassment.
Correct.
So on that amendment, are there any speakers? Senator Palacios, you are recognized on the amendment, the rector amendment?
In that case, can I speak on the amendment?
Oh, okay, you see, you, okay, yes, you may then, and then I'll call Senator Palacios afterwards.
And, and I, and I appreciate my, my colleagues' input on this. My, my thought on this, on harassment is, we hear people in the public all the time talking about inappropriate behavior by a police officer. I mean, I hear it, I assume other folks hear it. It's kind of like students accusing teachers of things. And I believe that police officers need a way to clear their good names. Because sometimes we hear in the public, somebody says, "Well, this, this police officer's", from, from women say, might say that "this police officer was, was hitting up on me, acting inappropriately, asking me for a date", or something to that effect. Well, whether that happened or didn't happen, I think it's important that these guys and women, because it happens on both sides, have a mechanism and a body in which they, these complaints can be dealt with, and that they can clear their good name. And so that's why I would reinstate harassment. Thank you.
Thank you very much Senator Richter. So on Senator Richter's amendment, then, on page four, line 19, to reinstate the word harassment, Senator Palacios, you are recognized on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it's not so much an objection to the restoration of that, but during the markup hearing, as much as we would like to see as many potential complaints and grievances be attended to by the commission, it was felt at that time that the most serious complaints, which might result in adverse action, being the motion, suspension, or termination, at least the, the, the gravity of the complaint, reserved that for the commission's attention. It is not that harassment or inappropriate language is not, does not merit attention, but understand that the internal affairs of the Guam Police Department will continue to exist, and that it was determined at that time during the markup hearing that those issues usually would not result in adverse action, but perhaps maybe a reprimand of some kind, or counseling and so forth. And that is why it, it was determined at that point that that kind of inquiry into allegation of harassment or improper language can be handled and considered internally within the Guam Police Department. Again, it's not so much harassment, but I want to point out that that was considered. And the, the bottom line here is to trim down the, the scope of, not, not so much authority, but, but duties, so that it, it can be concentrated and expedited, and only the most serious come to the attention of the commission. That was really the reason why that was deleted, not because it's not important, but it would, the time to spend on investigating harassment would, can be spent in looking at the use of excessive force, or why is an arrestee injured while under the custody of the Police Department. Thank you, Madam Speaker, I, I'd like to present that, thank you.
Thank you very much Senator Palacios. On the amendment, then, to reinstate the word harassment, are there any other speakers? None, do you, oh yes, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we, we were talking earlier, and the, the immediate re-retiring speaker was talking about the severity of, the type of offenses and conduct which should be investigated by this commission. And I think it was the, the collective wisdom of the committee and the purview under which he has been given the authority by virtue of this 30th Guam Legislature, to make those recommendations about the public safety apparatus and whether or not they should be, especially in this commission, opening it up so deeply to, to deal with things like inappropriate language which could be construed as harassment, harassment itself, failure to provide adequate or timely police protection. I think the intent was to try to provide a catalyst, other than the Internal Affairs Unit of the Guam Police Department, a catalyst for which complaints, especially serious ones, in, in most especially serious ones, are dealt with by an entity outside of the Police Department where there is a perception that the police themselves are not doing a sufficient job of investigating serious matters before them. And this is not to belittle harassment. We always hear from people within our community about the, um, the conduct of police officers, especially those police officers who have come before, and like my psycho maid, myself, Senator Palacios, and Guthur, who have been in the Police Department, many people reach out to say, "You know, you were a cop, how about this? Why did this officer act this way?" And of course, until you do a thorough investigation, it's inappropriate to make a, a premature judgment against an individual without knowing all the facts. But that's the reason Internal Affairs exists, is because there's a avenue for which to clear most of these matters, especially things that come before either civilian or uniform police officers. And that's true of any Police Department, port, airport, Guam Police. This commission is established to try to review those matters, but I think the intent, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, the, the good gentleman from Chalapago, Senator Palacios, was to make this a serious, more ser-, serious matters to be dealt with. And it is for that reason, and the reason that I articulated previously about the, the concern that I have about inundating this commission with so many complaints, that not only did the Internal Affairs Division or the Department or Section, whatever the, the title is given to it, the Internal Affairs Unit of the Guam Police Department will be not just devoid of complaints, but will be pretty much relegated to, to, I don't know, probably a, a small thimble full of complaints, and then this commission will be even further required to have funding allocated to it for even the most minor infractions or perceptions of misconduct. And I don't think that was the intent, and I think that's what I've been hearing consistently from the good gentleman from Chalapago. And I'm not sure whether he objected to this amendment, or maybe it was not actually aired. But in, in keeping with the tenants that I think that we intended to re-establish this commission, is to deal with the most severe, especially those, those cases that have the greatest impact, death, injury, serious violations, then unless you're willing to eviscerate the Internal Affairs component of the Guam Police Department, I object to this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much Senator Tenorio. On the amendment, are there any other speakers? With the author, the mover of the amendment, I'd like to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I, and I appreciate all the good input from my colleagues on this. And, and that being said, I still think it's an important amendment. If it's something that would theoretically inundate this commission, then it seems to me that that's something that the people of Guam need. If there's, if there's that many complaints and, and that many people that need to have their voice heard and to make sure that they feel comfortable and confident in our Police Department, then I think that this needs to be in the, the commission's purview. As well as I think that the officers need that protection. Like I said, just accusing people, uh, sometimes, you know, as 15 years in the classroom, I, I ran across sometimes students to get discipline, and one of the first things they would do is turn around and like, place false allegations on the teacher, and then it'd be on the front page of the paper the next day, and, "Teacher accused of yada, yada, yada." Of course, when the teacher is fully vetted and venerated, uh, it never gets in the paper. There's no clearance. And I want to make sure that when we can protect our police officers, our men and women that have such an incredibly difficult and challenging job, to make sure they have a way to protect their reputation, I, I think that's important. So I, I still stand in favor of that amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you Senator Richter. You should be in favor of it, you made the amendment. Okay, all those then in favor of the rector amendment was to reinstate the, the word harassment. Please raise your hand. Okay, motion, amendment felt, insufficient votes. Yes, I counted five. Are there any other speakers then on the, who would like to speak on the, on the, on the bill as amended? Then I'd like to ask then the author to, if he would like to do a closing.
She's just my see, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their time in deliberating this matter, and to those that are not so sure, because they're not so sure. Again, we're talking about how do we instill and reinstill the confidence that the people of Guam has within its Guam Police Department? And there has been an erosion. You hear it out there. The worst thing that you can hear out there, to me, is they're covering for each other. And that's what Internal Affairs kind of breeds, you know? And so what we are trying to do is inject an outside set of eyes, outside this quasi-military brotherhood, outside of that, to say that you can have confidence that the behavior of police officers, when they go past that line, is fully vetted and is not covered up. And how do you do that? People don't have that confidence now. So you establish this outside set of eyes, and you don't need $3 million, or $100,000, or $200,000 for this. I can see where the commission is going to take a look at what Internal Affairs comes up with. Because every complaint has to be handled by Internal Affairs anyway. So I can see this commission, where you complain to them, and they forward the complaint to Internal Affairs. But you know what? Then the people know that they can go to somebody that is a buffer, and is going to make sure that that gets reviewed by somebody else outside of this brotherhood. And it's a good thing to have that, but it's even a better thing to have another set of eyes. That's what we need in order to instill the public's confidence and reinstill it within the Police Department, so that people can actually know that there's somebody else that's going to hold that process accountable. So you're worried that, "Oh, we don't have any money for this, we don't have any money for the parole board." They meet, and they carry on their business, and it's not a glamorous position either. There are many boards and commissions in this government in which the people that either volunteer to serve or are asked to serve, know the obligations they have when they say they're going to serve. So, yeah, we may have to go one or two deep from our first choice, but we will find people who want to ensure that the public is protected from behavior of police officers that is, goes against the law, and that it will not be covered up, because it is important that we have that in our community, and we re-established this. You know, the, you look at statistics in some of the major cities and mid-town, mid, mid-major towns across this country, and the one thing you'll find effective is this community policing concept, that when you get the community behind the police officers, when you get them involved in the process, then crime goes down, officers become better public servants, and it improves the relationship between the community and Police Department. It doesn't strain it, it improves it. And I think we need to do something else from what we're doing now, because it's obvious we're not doing enough. When the public is saying, "Man, they, look at what happened there", and of course, of course, that's the decision they came up with, it's one of their own. course, that's the decision they came up with, it's one of their own. I think this police review commission, this community police, will put a stop to that, will greatly curtail that, if not eliminate it, that we have now members of the outside, members of the public, can look at something and say, you know what, that was appropriate behavior, given the circumstances, and to the best of knowledge that we have. We believe they acted appropriately, or no, they did not, and therefore, something should be done. So, you know, I can understand the concerns, but I'm asking my colleagues to please take a look at the public's concerns. Take a look at what the public is saying out there, hear them, because they're out there and they're talking. And if they're not talking to you, then you ask them, because they will respond. And I believe that this is a response to what's happened in the strained relationship between our public and our protectors. And we need to mend that, we need to fix it, we need to open it up and air it out. And when we do that, we're going to see a better system than what we have today. We're going to see a better police department, we're going to see a better police officer, because we will know that when things don't function right, we have people who are on our side to review it, and we trust them, and will be vet, you know, and they'll be sent down through this body that will look at it and make that judgment. And we need to have that there. It's not meant to supplant the Internal Affairs, I can see a very cooperative relationship between the commission and the police, police Internal Affairs. So those kind of management issues, maybe, I think if we had a supportive management structure, command structure within the Guam Police Department, no problem, this thing can work. If we have a supportive governor, this thing can work. It only didn't work because the governor didn't want it, didn't support it. But I believe that we need to move forward, we need to do something different, and we need to build and reinsteal the confidence that the public has, that for the greater, greater, greater number in our police department, we have people who are truly dedicated to protecting and serving. And those that are not will not be able to stay in that system because of any kind of loyalty to each other versus loyalty to the public that they protect and serve. Thank you, Ms. Dusmasi, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Fanglín. And on the motion then to place Bill 108 to the third reading filed, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Spishel, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Before we recess for lunch, I have a notwithstanding motion to suspend discussion on the second reading file. Proceed to the voting file and vote on the legislative concurrences that are in there, and then to revert back to second reading when we come back at 2:00.
And that motion, then without any objections, ordered. So we are now in the voting file to vote on the legislative concurrence. So just to read the, read the names of the individuals and committees then being nominated, and for confirmation, it'll be a show of hands. Okay, so clerk, can you, can you go ahead and read the first one? Yeah, except for number three and five.
On the appointment, Mr. Encito Walter to serve as a member of the Guam Academy Charter School Council.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. There are 12 votes, Mr. Encito Walter then is duly confirmed by this body.
On the appointment, Mr. James Allen Mason to serve as a member of the Guam Academy Charter School Council.
Please raise your right hand, those of you in favor. 12 votes, he is duly confirmed by this body.
On the appointment, Mr. William D. Youngraro to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Youngraro received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Mr. John Edwards II to serve as a member of the Guam On-Arm Combat Commission.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Norma Jean Flores to serve as a member of the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority Board.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. She received 13 votes, so she's duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Mr. Peter L. Valdez to serve as a member of the Guam Housing Corporation Board.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. Mr. Valdez received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Ms. Antonita S. Camacho to serve as a member of the Guam Banking and Insurance Board.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Camacho received 13 votes, she is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Mr. Andrew Chang Park to serve as a member of the Guam Land News Commission.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Park received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Mr. Roland S. Surtesa to serve as a member of the Guam Land News Commission.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Surtesa received 13 votes, he is duly confirmed.
On the appointment, Ms. Belinda Cruz-Meijeng to serve as a member of the Alcoholics Report Control Board.
All those in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Mayjeng is duly confirmed, she received 13 votes, thank you. That concludes then the legislative concurrence then, so Senator, Senator Blascher, recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, move to excuse Senator Cowell from the voting.
And Senator Ogun.
Senator Ogun.
Okay, so, yes, so, oh, we didn't do him earlier, then?
He was here already.
He was here earlier, okay, so.
Senator Ogun.
Without any objections, and so ordered. Okay, Senator. Okay, so there's, we're going to recess then until 2:00 this afternoon.
The legislature is back in session. I, I hope that everyone had a really good lunch and not something too much sugar so that you won't be too hyper this afternoon. So, continuing on, we do have Bill Number 112-30COR. And I recognize the author, Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that Bill 112-30COR substituted by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Senior Citizens be moved to the second reading?
To the third.
They accepted it in the third reading.
Or so.
Second reading.
So, since, since...
I'm accepting it.
Okay, okay. Since the substituted version then has been placed on the agenda, so that means it has been accepted.
Okay.
So now, make the motion then to place on third reading.
Thank you. With discussion, with brief discussion.
And you may proceed, Senators.
Madam Speaker, Sisus Massey again. Just very briefly, this bill will clearly define regulations, penalties, and services for Guam licensed drivers who are medically diagnosed with epilepsy. Madam Speaker, this bill's intent is creating that clear standard of rights and penalties for licensed drivers who are medically diagnosed to be epileptic with substantially, to be epileptic will substantially improve upon their quality of life. While the most prudent approach is to keep in mind the safety of all licensed drivers in our community, by no means should persons with medical conditions such as epilepsy be treated unequally because of such conditions. Again, Madam Speaker, we had a public hearing on this. I'd like to thank the Oversight Chair on Safety for hearing this bill expeditiously. Those who presented testimony at the public hearing supported the efforts. Dr. Ramel Carlos from, from the, who is a neurologist and has a clinic here, presented written testimony in support of. We had a cake volunteer who also has epilepsy, who's also working, said that he is in support of this bill. And I just, again, for the record, Madam Speaker, it just clarifies definitions and gives opportunity for those with epilepsy, who are, who are diagnosed to be epileptic free, the opportunity to get to and from and use a motorized vehicle to, to have their quality of life better for them as they look at their livelihoods of working and being able to get from their home to a place of work. So, I would like to make a couple of amendments, small amendments if I can at this time, Madam Speaker, but I also hope that my colleagues support this, this effort. On line...
Page?
Three.
Page one.
Page one, okay. The word clinically, again, to justify, change that to medically. The word clinically. Change it to medically. And if, and if throughout the bill there is the word clinically, to go ahead and change it to medically.
So, on, on the amendment then to change on page one, line three?
On line eleven.
Line, okay, wait. So, line three?
Line eleven.
Then, line eleven. But actually, your other amendment is that throughout the bill where clinically is stated that it then be replaced with medically if the motion passes. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor then of the amendment? Are there any objections? An objection, so ordered.
And then the second amendment, Madam Speaker, would be on page two, line twenty-three, after the word specialty, with a specialty or subspecialty, the, or subspecialty be included, and then take out, delete the words "the" on line twenty-three and "condition" on twenty-four. So, it would read, "From a licensed physician with a specialty or subspecialty in treating epilepsy."
So, okay, so we're going to write, delete the words?
No, no.
The condition off and write in "or subspecialty."
Or subspecialty.
Or subspecialty. Okay, on, on the amendment, are there any objections? On page two, line twenty-three, after the word specialty, after the words "or subspecialty" in treating, and then delete "the" condition off. On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
And again, Madam Speaker, I just want to thank my, the Oversight Chair on Safety, Senator, the good Senator from Chalapago, Senator Palacios, for hearing this bill, making the necessary amendments to further give credence to, and, and credence to this bill and, and, and make it a better bill. And I hope that my colleagues support this, this bill with me, Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the, the motion, Senator Rector, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. It's, obviously, a bill whose time has come. I, I know a number of, of citizens on Guam that have epilepsy that are prohibited from driving or do so illegally even though they, they can function and they can drive. And so, this is a, this is a good bill, because we know on Guam, if, if you can't drive, your quality of life significantly goes down. You have trouble holding a job because we don't have a good public transport system yet, though this legislature has done a darn good job so far of moving in the direction of fixing our public transport system. But until that happens, you need a car to get to work. You need a car to be a part of our, our community. It's, it's almost impossible to get around without one. So, just, just quickly, I, I rise in support of this bill. I commend the author of, of Bill 112, and, thank you.
Thank you very much. Senator Rector, on the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I certainly support the bill. I, I think that, you know, modern medicine continues to deal and find solutions to ailments that we find ourselves in. And the epileptic diagnosis is no different than other medical conditions that we have seen medicine been able to control to the point that individuals are fully functional and capable of being fully functional as long as they continue with the, with the regime, regime of drugs and treatment. The one thing that I looked at here is, I was looking at the committee report, Rev. Tax had a concern with regards to this self-reporting, that if we're going to require or we're going to depend on the individual to be self-reporting, then it, kind of like, in their opinion, or at least in what they've written, that it doesn't make the system as fail-safe as possible. And that they had suggested actually that the doctors who treat these patients be the ones to, if they treat a patient who has a driver's license and they, for example, get an epileptic seizure and then they get restricted according to the law, then they should report that to Rev. Tax or even GPD. Much like you have mandatory reporting on child abuse cases by physicians or nurses. When they see somebody, a child, and they have reasonable suspicion to believe that a case of abuse has been, is occurring, then they automatically report it to the authorities. And I think that Rev. Tax suggested that they would like to see these doctors automatically report these patients that they're treating, who they are and their condition, because they would know best, rather than requiring the patient himself to self-report. So, there's no check and balance there. And I wanted to rise to that point and add, you know, request from the, the committee and the author, I guess, was that concern addressed? And I don't see it in the bill. I may, I may be mistaken, but I, I don't see any of the reporting that requires the doctors to report the names of these patients to Rev. Tax. Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, I'd like to be able to make that kind of amendment on this issue. And so, I guess either additional discussion could occur with other members of the body who was to speak on the bill, but I'd like the opportunity to make some kind of amendment regarding this.
Okay. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak on the bill? Senator Tenorio, you're recognized. Senator Panglinen, will you work on your amendment?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, it was, I was concerned about the bill when it was first circulated for signature and, of course, in the public hearing process, it was vetted out that some of the issues that, as an individual, not as a physician, not as a neurologist, but as, as a person who knows those who have had epileptic conditions or the, have been diagnosed to be epileptic, and we know many of them, there are friends, there are families, but they will go for months at a time or weeks at a time without a epileptic seizure or any kind of condition. And then, I, if you follow some of the logic that is previously discussed about the individual, let's say I was epileptic and I wanted a driver's license and there was to be an epileptic episode, call it a seizure. Am I going to report that to my physician, which is going to forestall me from getting a driver's license? Clearly, if my goal is to get a driver's license, am I going to report my own event? Am I going to provide my medical physician a reason to impede or stand in the way of me getting a license? We all want to be able to move around freely of our own volition, but some conditions ultimately have an impact on how that happens. How we're able to truly have full control of a vehicle which weighs hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands of pounds, is going to be on the roadway and is going to be a potential hazard. It only takes one event. Now, you and I, Madam Speaker, we could have a heart attack, we could have a stroke, we could have some other medical condition as a byproduct of our physical health or even some things that may not even be a byproduct of our, our physical health. But the fact is, there is always a risk of something happening to the lay citizen who's going down the road, who has something that takes away his mechanical or full control of that, that vehicle. Now, that is a given. All vehicles in their nature are dangerous if they don't have control over it. But an epileptic, a person who has epilepsy, who may have not had an epileptic episode for months at a time, is prone to have these conditions. Is actually prone to have a seizure. And if we are going to rely purely on the self-reporting mechanism of this, I, I mean, again, with the absence of enough medical history and education to be able to dictate to the contrary, is there any kind of test that can be done on an individual who has epilepsy that shows whether or not he actually tells his own doctor or physician that he has had an epileptic seizure? Is there any way to, i- is there any way for medical science to determine whether or not, what, from his own voice or not, from some examination that he's had an epileptic episode? I, I, I'd like to pose that maybe question to the, to the author, because I, I'd like to know myself.
Would the author, author yield to the question?
I'll try and yield to that one, Madam Speaker, if I may. I'm not a doctor and just based on the information given by the neurologist here, he said that, that, yes, there are testings that can be done to determine whether that person is epileptic free or not, and that, that, of course, that, because there's no regulation in place today that would allow them to give them the saying this person is epileptic free or not, that's why this proposed legislation was being requested for. But is there a testing from the neurologist? Yes, there is testing, modern technology today that wasn't present back then, that is happening today, that can, can tell whether a person has been epileptic free or not for a period of time.
And just to be clear about the definition of terms, Madam Speaker, I want to ask this question as well, again, to the main mover of the amendment and the bill. Just give a scenario. In day one, you're diagnosed with epilepsy. That's the diagnosis, you're epileptic. In two-year period, you go without seeing a doctor. If you go to the physician, if I go to the physician and I have epilepsy, and over that two-year period, and I have not reported it to, or reported to have been seen by that doctor in that two-year period, is there an examination that can determine that I did or did not in fact have a seizure or some kind of epileptic episode when I actually see the doctor after that two-year period?
Would you yield to that question?
In, is there a procedure that can be done? Yes. Has there been a procedure that, that, that has been available? Yes. But when you, when you are applying for, for a license and it, there is a provision there that says, have you have any other, if you have any medical diagnosis, da-da-da-da, you, I mean, and it goes on to say, you have to answer that under penalty of perjury if that is true or not. And if you answer it with a yes, of course, they're going to ask you, when was the last time? And that is up to the motor, because motor vehicle will automatically deny you that. So, is there a testing possible? Yes. But the doctor can't give it right now. But the doctor can't give it right now because, because he's, there's nothing in place right now with motor vehicle. And I want to know for the record, Madam Speaker, that provisions like this have been accepted, I mean, authorization like this has been accepted in all the states.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Barnes.
Thank you, I appreciate the, um...
You may continue, Senator Tenorio.
Thank you, I appreciate the answers by the gentle lady. So, if I'm hearing it right, then an individual who is, in fact, diagnosed with epilepsy can go to a physician and be examined, or some kind of a test can be done to determine that he, in fact, or she, in fact, has not had an epileptic episode during the six months prior, which I think is the condition precedent for him to be issued a license under the medical diagnosis that he is free of any epileptic seizure. And if that is the case, then we have the ability to project, then, if he has been epileptic seizure-free for that six months prior, presumably, then, he is fit to drive a vehicle. Then the next question is, actually, two questions. How frequently should a driver who is epileptic be required to undertake such an examination so that we know that he is not being prone to have those seizures, especially while driving a vehicle? And then, the second question is, if a doctor were to examine a patient and say he is, in fact, seizure-free and has had no episodes for the last six months, does he then have some culpability or liability that's attached to his issuance of that license? Because if the individual driving that vehicle is epileptic and then has a seizure while driving it at any time after the issuance, can there be some responsibility inferred to the person who authorized him by virtue of his examination to get the license when he knew that there may be a higher chance of, in fact, getting into an accident? These are the things that cross my mind and kind of caused me to pause when I was asked to sign off on the bill. And, of course, the public hearing process has some references to these matters, but it really, it kind of leaves an open question. And I'm really concerned about making sure that we balance the needs of an individual to be able to be driving of his own volition, control of his own vehicle, be able to increase his quality of life, perhaps provide better for his family and himself, because he's able to drive without an epileptic episode or seizure, whatever you want to call it. But then, again, concerned also about the unwitting motorists who may be going down the opposite lane or may be right in front of this gentleman or lady, who might then be a victim of the policy of issuing a license to a person who we know that has a propensity to have epileptic, excuse me, epileptic seizures. So, these are the things I want to further get to the essence of before we finish the debate on this, and I'm very much interested in hearing my other colleagues' position on it. But these are, in fact, some concerns that I do have with respect to supporting this bill, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak and hear the responses from the gentle lady. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Palacios, on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have no real objection to the bill, but I ask, you know, I ask myself with respect to the liability implications. For example, if this government and the physician that okayed the issuance of a permit for this, for this, for an individual with, who is epileptic and involving a collision resulting in fatality or serious injury, what is the extent of liability of this government allowing such individuals, such condition, you know, to operate out there along with the so-called regular operators? Personally, I think there has to be some ramifications with respect to liability. I mean, there's no doubt about that, because, and I would think that the issuing authority would be, I think, the most logical party to be, to be, I guess, to be sued if there's such a case. Another issue here is the insurance implication, and I would venture to say that this might raise probably the premium for insurance on drivers with epileptic conditions, and if that is the case, that would be a discrimination against this class of individuals, for example. There are some ramifications. I know that these issues can be brought up, because no insurance would treat it, in my opinion, as the same way as a person with perfectly healthy conditions. We have case laws in the past, Madam Speaker, where a person, under the influence of alcohol, involved in an accident, at times, it can be traced that such condition originated from some club, some restaurant, there was an implication there of liability. We have seen this, and I think suits have been had before against the establishment that induce the so-called alcoholic influence, even though the choice to drink is the choice of the drinker. But knowing the condition of the individual, whether the individual had a, is under the influence of alcohol and continuing to feed him alcohol, or that the individual is epileptic, knowing in advance that this condition exists and going ahead to license this individual, if this individual's licensed under the authority of the government of Guam, I would think that the government of Guam may be subject to suit as a party authorizing such, you know, such privilege to be out there. And, of course, my concern here is really the conflict that might occur with the innocent drivers out there if they got hit by this person. Somebody has to be liable, that's the bottom line, and I'm concerned about that. And I'd like to register that observation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak on the motion? Senator Blas, you are recognized. And, yes, but as amended, of course.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And to answer your question, yes. Okay. Madam Speaker, and I appreciate the, you know, what this legislation...
Is your mic on?
Yeah, I just decided to speak a little softer than I normally speak.
Oh, okay.
I've been accused of being speaking a little too loud. But, Madam Speaker, maybe I can, this is a question if the author of the bill would yield to...
Would the author yield?
And the question is basically, actually, the necessity for Section 5, found on Page 5.
The necessity of, where, Page 5?
Page 5, Section 5.
Section 5. Okay. Senator Barnes, did you hear the question?
Put, you know...
Page 5, he said.
Page 5.
Section 5.
Section 5.
Is there a necessity for that section, right?
Right.
Yes.
I look at the bill, and the bill basically provides, it's to allow individuals who have been medically diagnosed with, as being epileptic, once they've been able to be medically cleared, to be able to drive, you know, to provide them the opportunity to get a driver's license. I don't know where Section 5, recognizing that during the process, there may be, as a result of maybe a recurring episode or an episode where it's going to deem that they can no longer have the driver's license, you know, that they're going to have to rely on another means of transportation. But I don't see how this fits into the bill.
I have no objections, Madam Speaker, if he deletes this.
So, Senator Blas, I guess you've got...
For the purposes of germaneness, and I don't want it to get caught up in everything, I move to delete Section 5.
So, on the motion then to delete Section 5 of Page 5, are there any objections? No objections, order.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Section 5, Page 5. On the main motion, are there any other speakers? I'm still waiting for an amendment by Senator Panglinen. So, are there any other speakers? Senator Panglinen, are you ready with your amendment?
Madam Speaker, I just, I'm looking over the bill, trying to figure out the process and the mechanism for trying to, for what I would like to see happen, and I just don't know enough about the requirements of, you know, Privacy Act and the Medical Records Act and those kind of issues, to offer the amendment that may run afoul of those provisions of the HIPAA law, medical records, privacy. So, I'm not going to offer that amendment. I don't feel comfortable at this time offering such an amendment without understanding fully all the implications. So, I just wanted to state that for the record, and you don't have to come back to me for an amendment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Are there any other speakers? Okay, so then I would offer, then, the primary sponsor, then, the author, to close. Senator Barnes, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for sharing their concerns and the interest in this bill. But as I mentioned earlier, the main intent of this bill was to afford a better quality of life for those with a disability specifically known for their disability of epilepsy. I think that having provisions in place, having a section where they can at least be afforded the opportunity to apply, and, again, it would be the ultimate decision of an agency whether to approve that license or not based on the information that is provided by that applicant or that driver from the areas of needing medical clearance, that would be up to that driver to show cause or proof that everything's in order. And I think that if we at least have these provisions in place, that there could be a source where an opportunity is being presented, where they want to improve their quality of life by having a livelihood to work, being able to utilize a vehicle to get from point A to point B, and being able to know that if they have shown medical clearances, that they can at least be afforded that opportunity. And as said earlier, Madam Speaker, with driving on this island is literally a privilege and not a right. And being able to follow rules and regulations that are here by the agency that is responsible or us as an august body to introduce legislation to make sure that the safeties and the protocols are in place, it's also important to know that if there is an opportunity to provide and make sure that those safety protocols are in place, but to clearly assess those with a medical condition, be also given the opportunity to improve their livelihood and not, and not, how would you say, hold it against them because of their disability, I think that they should be given that opportunity to try. And, again, Madam Speaker, if these provisions are at least put in place, there is a avenue for those who suffer this disability to be afforded that opportunity to at least try. And I'm asking that my colleagues support this effort, as you and I know that there are no laws in place to at least afford this opportunity for those who have this disability, be given that quality of life to improve their livelihood. So, I'm asking that my colleagues, please, please, look at this bill with careful consideration and give those that opportunity who really want to be able to be self-sustaining in this community, want to be able to live and work closely, I mean, with improving their quality of life, and be able to be responsible enough to make sure that if provisions or an authorization is given to them, that they're afforded that opportunity. So, I want to thank you for having this bill presented on the floor and me given the opportunity to speak on behalf of this bill, and I ask that my colleagues, please, give it some careful consideration in support of Bill 112. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
To put it on the third reading...
The motion is made already earlier, so you're in order, but your colleague really would like to help make your bill a better bill, and he's asked to be recognized again, so I recognize...
I have no objections to that. Thank you, Seidus Mossi, Madam Speaker.
Senator Panglinen, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I was just going through the committee report, and in looking at the committee report and assessing the information contained in there, therein, both Dr. Carlos, who was, or...
Give me the...
Right. And the neurologist on island who treats patients with epilepsy, and I guess has experience doing that, has indicated that in the states, in some driving communities, physicians are actually obligated to report patients with epilepsy to DMV. And in looking at Rev. Tax's testimony, they also indicated that there are some jurisdictions that require it. I think that's necessary in our case, and so, I've asked legal counsel to just draft a simple amendment that would require a doctor who has treated a patient for an epileptic seizure, who is in possession of a valid driver's license, that the doctor should report that patient, that driver's name to DMV. So, she's preparing that...
So, we're going to take a minute recess. The legislature is back in session, and I hope everybody has a copy of Senator Pangolinan's amendment.
Thank you very much.
Senator Pangolinan, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Sis, for the indulgence, Madam Speaker. There's actually two amendments, and I want to give Tom a little bit of credit with regards to the first one, and myself a little for at least recognizing it, that it would be a nice gesture to make. And that's the counsel for the minority here. I wanted to just separate epilepsy and epileptic from three, so that there'll be a new section four, and it will revolve around the person who is diagnosed with epilepsy.
I only got one.
So, my amendment would be, my first amendment would be a number three. It would read, "Who is insane or feeble-minded, or an idiot, or an imbecile, period."
I'm sorry, I don't have a copy of that amendment.
No, it's not. I'm not reading it out.
Oh, you're reading, okay.
Yeah, I'm reading that one out.
So, can you repeat that again?
My first amendment would be to put a period on page two, number three, beginning on line 19.
Page two.
I would like number three to read, "Who is an imbecile, or who is insane, or feeble-minded, or an idiot, or an imbecile, or a senator." Oh, no.
We were all listening, I want you to know that.
Oh, you were listening? All right. Since everybody caught it, we won't put that there.
On that amendment?
We would just put, "Or an imbecile, period."
Or an imbecile, period, okay.
And then, we would have a new number four, which is epileptic, an epileptic, and it'll be, and we'll make the legal counsel style it correctly. Out of that line, yeah, you know, I don't think it's appropriate to categorize these people with those conditions.
So, are you saying then that legal counsel is going to provide a definition?
We'll make number four. She's just separating it.
Oh, okay.
So then, number four would be for a person with epilepsy.
Okay.
And then, my amendment would be...
One moment, please, I'm trying to...
So, my amendment would be that the epileptic becomes a number four item, and so that underlined section becomes number four. And then, the amendment I'm offering would go at the end of that, and that's the one that was passed out.
Okay, which is subject to...
Right. And the amendment would be to go at the end of that, would be, "Subject to patient privacy rights granted by law, all physicians shall report to the Department of Motor Vehicles the name of any patient who is in possession of a valid driver's license, or age 15 years or older, who is diagnosed as subject to epileptic seizure or other epileptic episode." And again, this is trying to caveat it with the privacy rights and so forth. I wasn't so sure of how it's done in other places, but we do know from testimony given that it is done in other places. So if any kind of privacy issues come and trump us, then we understand those, and it would not make this section operative with regards to the reporting requirement. But if it doesn't get trumped by the privacy rights, then the physicians would be obligated to report it.
Okay, on the, I should have done the first amendment, which is on line 19 on page two, then, was to put the word "imbecile" before "insane," and then put a period after, I mean, to delete rather, yes, put a period after "imbecile," or "epileptic" would be deleted.
Yes, right.
Okay, so, and then, the new number four would have epileptic, and then, the new write-up would say, "Subject to patient privacy rights," and that re-numbers at the end. You're right.
Yeah, who's right. Yeah, right, that's what I meant. Okay.
Does everybody understand the amendment? I want to make sure it's...
No.
No? Senator Pangolinan, do you mind, let's, okay, can you, can you, yeah, the non-written, can you just write, just read the sentence again? Who is...
Yeah.
On line 19, "Who is," and you said add the word "imbecile," right?
No, no, no.
No?
"Who is insane..."
Okay, insane.
"...or feeble-minded, or an idiot, or an imbecile, period."
Or, an imbecile, period.
Right.
And then, delete the words "or epileptic."
That's correct. Then it will be a new number four...
Okay, so let's do that first, and then, to get that out of the way.
Yes.
So, does everybody understand the first amendment? On page two, line 19, and it should read, "Who is insane, or feeble-minded, or an idiot, or an imbecile, period."
Period.
And delete "or epileptic."
That's correct.
Okay, so everybody understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so then, are there any objections to that amendment? No objections, so order.
Then, the rest of that paragraph becomes number four. So you would have, "Who is an epileptic," then, except for that patient, applicant, who is clinically diagnosed, and so forth. And then, the language that I had passed out would be added at the end of that.
After the word restrictions.
After the word restrictions. So that's a new number four.
Okay, does everybody understand now the second amendment?
Yes.
Clerk, I want to make sure that you are clear. One moment.
Okay?
Are you okay? The clerks, are you okay?
Okay. Yes, the clerks.
Okay, just really want to make sure, because they're the ones going to engross the bill.
Right.
Okay, then, so, on the second amendment, then, are there any obje... Oh, those who'd like to speak on the amendments, Senator Cruz, you are recognized. Vice Speaker?
I'm probably going to regret thinking out loud, but I'm a little concerned about the slippery slope we're placing ourselves in here in having these reporting requirements. Because there are some people that go on medication for any kind of thing, and if it's any medication that's going to make them drowsy and unable to drive, are we going to then start asking the doctors to report that they've placed certain persons on medication, and that with the prescription saying that they shouldn't drive a vehicle with X number of hours before or after? Or if a doctor knows that his patient is, say, alcoholic, and prone to getting drunk and driving, that they're to start reporting that to revenue tax? I'm just, I just, and as I said, I'm probably going to regret having spoken, thinking out loud, but I'm just a little concerned about where this is going to lead us, and will we stop this reporting.
You're not asking for anyone to answer that question? You're just... You're not asking for anyone to answer that question, you just want to think it out loud. Are there any speakers? Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, just first off, a minor amendment. I think that the...
Wait, we're still dealing with the number four?
On Pangolinan amendment?
Yes.
I think it's actually called the Division of Motor Vehicles of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. So make, yeah.
Okay, so it's technical, okay, and legal counsel will be able to take care of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And well, and you know, Madam Speaker, I have to, although I fully support the attempt here being made, being proffered in this amendment, but I also have to express my concern too, as expressed by the good Senator from Petey, in how far we're going to be going with this. But then more importantly, going back to just specifically this issue, it appears that, again, subject to the privacy rights granted by law, that a physician now has got to make this report to the Division of Motor Vehicles on all patients who not only possess a driver's license, but all patients above the age of 15 years of age. And my concern here now, and again, this is, again, I appreciate and I thank the good author of the amendment. Because I noticed, I know too, that he had some difficulty in being able, how to be able to do this. But what happens if a 24-year-old does have epileptic seizures and does not want his name to be reported? Because he does not, and he has no intentions of getting a driver's license. Secondly, is what are the penalties? What are the penalties going to be against the physician for not reporting it? What's the liability here? And so those are some of the questions I still, I have. Although I recognize and I appreciate, you know, this intent because it helps to, it helps to close that gap, if you will, of the concern of how do we get that information there, but then what of the information? And again, what if a 24-year-old has epileptic seizures, never intends to get a driver's license? Or at least doesn't attempt to get that driver's license at that time? I think we're putting too much of an onus on the physician, too much of a requirement on the physician that may be unnecessary and may be violating the patient's rights. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. Senator Guthrie, you are recognized on the motion or Senator Pangolinan's amendment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Madam Speaker, I just need a little clarification because earlier when the good Senator was speaking, he went through a list of terms describing certain conditions. And I'm kind of worried, that's current law, is that correct, Madam Speaker?
Yes.
Well, I would like to inform members here that that language is really inappropriate and it's extremely offensive. And if we're going to be working on this bill, I would like to recommend that we consider replacing that language with other words that are appropriate for this day and age. I've been in contact with some folks, they called me on my cell. They're very upset that we would replicate that language, even though it's in current law. We need to correct that. And I would like to ask perhaps legal counsel to help us determine what would be the right language to use. Because this is not good for us to allow to continue in the law, this current language. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and Senator Guthrie, I couldn't agree with you anymore. I think, I'm going to go and make the decision here to call for a brief recess and I think we need to try to get in touch maybe with the medical professionals maybe at mental health to get the proper, you know, words to use for this, even though it is part of the law. So we're going to take a brief recess.
Back in session. My apologies, Senator Barnes. I would... Senator Guthers is not here and she brought up, and she has an amendment and I'm going to ask Senator Barnes to do that. But before that, though, is... Oh, no, maybe while we're still on this area, which is Section 3. And do you have her amendment?
Yes, it's being offered, but no.
Okay, because I received a copy. Don't worry, they'll bring it to you, just have to see. Take your seat and I'll have somebody bring it to you.
You are so kind.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator Barnes, then. I understand you have an amendment then that you would like to proffer in behalf of Senator Guthers, then?
And that would be amend Section 3 and 5 of 3101I in Section 2 of the bill and it would say, "Three, number three, who is insane and then delete or feeble-minded or an idiot or an imbecile and then underline 'or subject to any physical or mental impairment incapacity or disability which affects the applicant's ability to exercise reasonable and ordinary control in operating a motor vehicle upon the highway."
Okay, so we're going to do one at a time, yes. So on that amendment, are there anyone who would like to speak on it? Senator Tenorio, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I appreciate the amendment from the gentlelady with regards to redefining and taking some offensive language out of that. I do, I do kind of echo the sentiments of the good gentleman from PD, though, with regards to where we're going and the slippery slope that we may be creating. Because, "Or subject to any physical or mental impairment incapacity or disability which affects the applicant's ability to exercise reasonable and ordinary control in operating a motor vehicle upon the highway," could be construed as what was mentioned earlier, if someone is given a prescription drugs which affects their impairment or incapacity or disability to, in fact, control that, that vehicle. So, the, the, these are the exceptions to issuance of license to ordinary people. It is the, these are the exceptions to issuance of a license to a person. This whole thing is about the permanent condition. And so, I wonder again if we start to create that slippery slope where you're issuing a license to an individual who's insane, clear, no doubt. Try, striking all the other offensive language, feeble-minded, idiot, imbecile, these are things, of course, that are words of antiquity, in some cases may actually have some place in law. But if we continue to go beyond that, if you go to, "Or subject to any physical or mental impairment," now mental, again, we're dealing with the insane or the mentally affirmed, maybe, somebody who's actually under, who is not able to get a license because their mental condition simply does not allow it, then that's a permanent condition which is the exception to the issuance of a license. But I think you may be going a little bit far if we go beyond that. And this is not without the benefit of a lot of research, especially dealing with those who, this section is specifically designed to prevent from getting a license. So I'm a little cautious about the entirety of it outside of who is insane or subject to mental impairment. I think I can stop there. Mental impairment or incapacity. I think that's, that's a reasonable point that the exception is supposed to be designed for. It's supposed to be for people who do not have the capacity mentally because of their, their, their maybe mental challenges to effectively be responsible for such a great privilege of driving a vehicle on our motor, on our, on our highways. So, I'm going to make a, an amendment, if, if there's no objection, I'm interested if there may be, but I just don't want to create a situation where we're going too far. So I say, "Stop it insane or subject, strike physical, subject to any mental impairment or incapacity." All right.
Okay, so there is an objection. So the amendment then, Tenorio's amendment to the Barnes amendment, are there, there is an objection, so all those who are in favor then of the Tenorio amendment, please raise your hand. Yes, so, okay, the, his amendment was to then delete physical and add the word "or" incapacity, period, and then delete the rest, which is Senator Barnes' amendment. So, I mean, you, you want to speak on, okay. So, I didn't, I...
Once again, the amendment being offered by Madam Speaker is an amendment that, as correctly put, what would disqualify you from being, from applying for a license or being issued a license. Remember, so that an applicant is not entitled to an operator or chauffeur's license or instruction permit, who is. So, if you're insane or subject to any mental impairment, I mean, any could be a 10% mental disability or a 10%... disability, or a 10%, you know, VA, we have veterans who are, who have disability at 20, 30, 40, 50 percent. So now, when you say that, you're saying any mental impairment or incapacity or disability, so that a veteran could be denied a, a license because he's, he has a disability through his connected service disability, and therefore, you're not gonna, that that could disqualify you? I don't think that's what we mean here. I mean, what we mean here is, your impairment prevents you from being able to safely operate a motor vehicle. And in those cases, they obviously don't. So, when you kind of just make it so open-ended, then there's no, nothing to kind of put some blocks or some borders around this, and anything could then subject you to being denied. And I don't think that's the intent. At least, that's the way I kind of read it when, when I look at that amendment as structured and as offered. So, that's why I, I object to that amendment, I think. Or, I know I do. Well, I think.
You, you are.
I could be subject to being denied a license right now.
I've, so, on the Tenorio amendment. The Tenorio amendment is to delete physical, physical or, it has to be physical or, so it'd be to, "Subject to any mental impairment or incapacity, period, and delete the rest of the, the words." That is the Tenorio amendment.
So, is the author of the amendment?
Yes, because he's amending your amendment. So, and there is an objection. Yes, but, so, are you done, Senator Panglinen? Are you, I'm going to call for the vote now. Okay, so then, on the Tenorio amendment, and I'll repeat it one more time, and it would be where it says, "Or subject to any mental impairment or incapacity, period." So all those in favor of the Tenorio amendment, please raise your hand. The amendment failed. So we're back to the Guthers-Barnes amendment, which is the, which is number 3, Section 3. All those in favor, oh, you want to speak on it? Okay, then Senator, Senator Rector, you're recognized then on Section 3 of the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'll tell you, once again, this is why it's so important for a lot of smart folks here at the legislature to take a look at some of this stuff, and, and it's really given us the ability to go back and fix an old law in the books that is outdated and uses not only the wrong terminology, but offensive terminology. And while we are considered on, we were, we were quite keen on looking at old terms that we know, i.e. feeble-minded, idiot, or imbecile, and we know that those are inappropriate, but actually, just after Googling it, the term insane is inappropriate, too. It is no longer used in most contexts legally. So, this leads us to all kinds of problems with this entire section and this entire amendment, for me. Whereas, I think the amendment that's proffered in, in Section 5 really will cover all of the intent that we want. So therefore, I'm just going to move that we delete this entire Section 3. So, to amend the amendment, I, I think we should just delete all of this language. And so, I'm going to move to amend the amendment by deleting everything in Section 3, which leaves...
Wait, no, no, no. We can't do that yet, because somehow, you're...
Do you want to vote it down first?
Well, no, 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 because, I mean, there are other amendments, of course, that have passed already, and then by you deleting that whole section and her amendment only amends a portion of this. No, we know we're Guthers.
This is Judy Guthers' amendment.
Yes, and then, and he, and he has, no, no, and Senator Panglinen's amendment already passed, which is to then remove "or epileptic" on the line 19, and created a whole, another section. See, there's several, two amendments already that has been passed, that have passed on this particular section.
Yes.
Okay. So, what we need to do, if, if her, if her amendment, if Guthers-Barnes' amendment fails, then I'll entertain your amendment, which is to delete then Section 3.
Okay, so then, right now, when we talk about the Guthers-Barnes amendment, though, we're only talking about Section 3 of the, so we've divided the question?
Yes.
Okay. Then in that case, I stand opposed to the amendment as it stands, and I encourage all of my colleagues to vote against it so that we can make proper rulings. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Senator. Are there any other speakers then on the Guthers-Barnes amendment? Senator Palacios? Just, number 3, yes, Section 3. Are you going to speak? Oh, no. Okay, yes, because we've divided the question. So those, all those then who are in favor of the Guthers-Barnes amendment, please raise your hand. There is objection. So there's, yes, I'm calling for the vote, those in favor of the Guthers-Barnes amendment. Yes, only 3. I'm dividing this, not doing 3 and 5 together. So there's only one vote, I'm sorry, it failed.
Okay. So, Madam Speaker, then...
So now, you want to...
Finish, finish of your amendment?
Finish of your amendment and go to number 5.
When it appears by examination or other evidence that such is unable to safely operate a motor vehicle upon a highway because of physical or mental, delete the word defect and then underline impairment, the new one would be impairment, comma, incapacity, comma, or disability, or except in the case of an applicant for an instruction permit, lack of skill, any physical or mental, delete the word defect, and then under, the underlying new word would be impairment, comma, incapacity, or disability of the applicant. Did you want me to finish it?
No, I think it's okay.
Okay.
So on the Guthers-Barnes amendment, on Section 5, which is to delete the word defect and replace it with impairment, incapacity, or disability, all those in favor, please raise your hand. I mean, are there no objections?
No objections.
Okay, very good, thank you. So, Section 5 passed.
So, Madam Speaker, if I might just be, for point of clarification, Section 3 is still in with the words, "Who is insane, people," right?
Yes, 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 and we'll get to that first. Now, to, to dispose of Section 4, which is Panglinen's amendment, where it's, it's with, who says, "Who is an epileptic," and then he has, let me find it, and after that, the words, "Subject to patient privacy rights." So all those in favor of the new Section 4? On Section 4? Okay, on Section 4, then?
On the amendment, I spoke with the author, and sometimes it's important for us to be able to clarify who exactly it is, and the intent here is to make sure that the Department of Motor Vehicles, actually, the Motor Vehicle Division, is equipped with the name of the individual who is diagnosed with epilepsy. But sometimes, the identifying the name itself is not sufficient. So, it's important for them to be able to clarify with other identifying information. So, on the second line of that amendment, under VCP, where it says, "The name of any patient," I'd like to insert, after the word name, the follow, after the word name, put, "And other necessary identifying information of any patient." So the Department of Motor Vehicle has the ability to discern exactly who it is, if there's John C. Cruz, which John C. Cruz it is.
So the amendment again is, one more time, to please repeat?
And, after the word name, insert, and, on this, the amendment under VCP, right, under the, after the word name, the phrase, "And other necessary identifying information."
Okay. Does everybody understand the amendment? And more importantly, the clerks, do you have it?
Information, right?
"And other necessary identifying information," and it continues, "Of any patient." On that amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. So on the amendment that has been amended, on Section 4, are there any objections? No objections, and so ordered. Thank you. I recognize Senator Tenorio now on an amendment that he wants to proffer on Section 3.
On page 2, line 23, Madam Speaker, masking that we insert language, which is based on my evaluation and read of the bill, doesn't currently exist. So testimony was provided that other jurisdictions use a litmus test of 12 months of epileptic-free experience, or, or going through 12-month period without an epileptic seizure or any kind of episode which would affect the control of the motor vehicle for which we envision in this bill issuing a license. So if we're going to authorize in law the ability for someone to have that license, and who is epileptic, that they should submit, in that process of certification, an actual statement that says, "The patient has in fact been free of epileptic seizure for 12 months." So let's, if we're going to try to resemble and try to emulate the jurisdictions across the nation that have allowed the issuance of a license, which is a privilege to the citizens of those places, under the premise that he or she is not a risk to the community because he has been free of that epileptic seizure which would ultimately lose control of that, that vehicle, then we should try to also incorporate that language in this bill. And that would be on line 24, I'm sorry, it's...
You said line 23?
Yeah, you're right, 24. So after the word applicant...
Applicant, no, it's 23.
Yeah, we're on page, yeah, 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 okay. So I, I incorrectly added, the, the line number is 24, I apologize. So it's page 2, line 23, is it? 24. Okay, so after the word applicant, it says, "Epilepsy indicating that such applicant," and then this language, "Has not had any epileptic-related seizure or other condition that would affect his or her ability to drive a motor vehicle within the preceding 12 months."
I think we need to, can I take one minute break here?
That's a new Section 4. Yeah, but that was before this amendment. "Or other condition that would affect his or her ability to drive a motor vehicle within the preceding 12 months." So the person has to be free of that 12 months prior to that certification of any epileptic seizure, so he has demonstrated with confidence to the physician and by virtue of any medical examination, that the individual is not in fact a threat and has the ability to control the vehicle. If we're going to high, if we're going to establish the same standard, and we're going to allow a person who has epilepsy, who's been free of an epileptic episode or seizure, to get on our motor vehicles and be trusted like every other person without epilepsy, to be in control of that vehicle, then we should make sure that we, as again, emulate the same conditions which exist in other states and other jurisdictions, which was articulated in the public hearing. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Okay, so on the Tenorio amendment, are there any objections? No objections, and so ordered, thank you. Senator Rector, you're recognized, understand you have an amendment for Section 3.
Madam Speaker, yes, you know, after we, we approve Section 5, Section 3 now becomes useless. So I, I moved to delete Section 3 that has the offensive language in it, "Who is insane or feeble-minded, or an idiot, imbecile, or epileptic," after, after Googling all of those terms, or, or none of those terms are any longer used anywhere. So, let's do the right thing and delete these offensive terms. The appropriate language is covered later on by the former amendment and number 5. Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the amendment by Senator Rector, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if one would read on page 2, line 6, it actually says that an applicant is not entitled, and who are these applicants that are not entitled to an operator's or chauffeur's license, and then it says 1, 2, 3. And the number 3 down there, by, by removing that, and I'm not, I'm not necessarily questioning that, but I'm just saying that by, by deleting that, it actually then says that they're not exempted, that they can, they can actually be issued operator's license. Because, again, going back to line 6, it says, "An applicant is not entitled," and who are not entitled? The minors, not of legal age, habitual drunkard, and then it talks about that. So if we delete that, then it, it removes them from exemptions, and put them, like any other person, they can actually apply and be considered for that. And that, that's how I see it. Probably, we should come up with different, but I don't know, if, if the others do not observe it that way, but this is related to subitem I, which is under 3101, license requirement. And, and, and that's, again, my, my observation, which would be the ramification of removing that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Do you want the author to yield? You're saying you don't know, you want to know what the ramifications are?
I'm stating that, that by removing that, then they, then they essentially would be eligible for issuance of an operator's license, because they're not under the so-called, "Who are not entitled to." So if they are not included in the non-entitlement, then I would say that then they are entitled. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Palacios. On the Rector amendment, which is to delete then Section 3, Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I have to agree with the good senator from Chalhoun-Pago, and I recognize and, and the efforts being done by the good senator from, from, from Canyara. But, I, again, in, in agreeing with the good senator from Chalhoun-Pago, Section 3, although I recognize, too, that we need to be able to change that language in, in as far as the, the description, it describes individuals who are. The way we approve Section 5 is hind, individuals who appear to be. That's two separate descriptions of individuals. One, one is individuals who are, and the other one is individuals who appear to be. And so I have to be, agree with the concerns brought on by the senator from, from Chalhoun-Pago, and, and maybe we, we just need to be able to tighten, or to change the description that we're using in Section 3 as opposed to deleting it. Thank you.
So, on the amendment then to delete Section 3, are there any other speakers? Senator Rector, you want to close?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Realistically, the way Section 3 is written right now, it has no meaning in law. It's just offensive. There is no definition, we do not scientifically use, there's no scientific definition for insane, there's no scientific definition for feeble-minded, or idiot, or imbecile. These definitions do not exist. All it is, offensive language, and if we leave it in the law, it means that we condone this offensive language. And, so, we need to take it out. And, and like I said, I believe in, in 5, that when somebody is examined by a medical professional and determined to have any physical or mental impairment or incapacity or disability which inhibits their ab... which inhibits their ability to, to operate a vehicle effectively, then they're already, they're already pulled out. This is sensible language that makes sense, whereas saying that we, we can't let these people that don't exist have a driver's license, just doesn't make any sense. So, so I asked my colleagues to remove this superfluous language that only serves to offend. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion then to delete section three, all those, oh, there, there was an objection, so all those in favor, please raise your hand.
I thought we amended the words.
No, it was never amended.
Wasn't that about the amendment?
Yes, but it failed. Senator Cruz, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, let me see, there is another amendment. Which is Palacios amendment. Senator Palacios, you're recognized for your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I realized that earlier, section five was taken out, and my, my amendment here is actually to put an effective date and use the same section. Why do we need an effective date? There'd be some changes, Madam Speaker, and I think that sixty days given to the Department of Revenue Taxation to make adjustments and changes in the forms that they have, they would need that, that they would need to look at this and, and match the application forms to be filled out by the applicants. Now, I know that there will be some changes there, for example, the, the question relative to, have you had an epilepsy, or are you an epileptic? I, I don't think, if that will remain in the form, then probably there should be a space there, explain. Right now, if you have it, then you qualify outright. So the effective date of sixty days, I think, would be reasonable, because of the changes here, should this become law, they would need that. And then the transition would be January first, two thousand and ten. So that's the amendment, it's just to designate an effective date. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
No objection. On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
So, Madam Speaker, can I close?
Okay, one second. Is, uh, there, is there any other, anybody else who would like to make an amendment or speak on the, on the main motion?
We were closing, we were closing when, when you gave him the opportunity to speak, and then we opened it up.
Yes, I know, and that's why I want to make one more time to make sure again. There might be somebody with some burning passion to speak on, on such a bill that... Senator Palacios?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I was looking at section five that we just passed, and I have no objection, except that the, you know, when it, it reads here, when it appears by examination or other evidence, and going on down, it says that any defect or mental incapacity of the applicant, which in the opinion of the Director of Revenue Taxation. Could we insert somewhere there where it says, when, when it appears by medical examination? And that way, because this is to differentiate between an examination in writing, or just an examination that's designed by the, the Director of Revenue Taxation, so that by medical examination, clearly, there has to be some kind of, of report. Just like right now, for example, if one were to get a disabled placard, there's a requirement from DSCIT and from some doctors of the, certifying the disability of that individual. And so that is just to make it clear that I think it should be medical examination.
So you're, on the subsection five, when it appears by, add the word medical...
Just insertion of medical examination.
On, on that amendment then to add the word medical on subsection five, and it reads, when it appears by medical examination. No objection, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Now, is, is there anybody else again who would like to speak? One more chance before I ask...
No more chances.
Yes, because I, apparently it's a, a bill that everyone feels very strongly about, so, one way or the other, but anyway, so I'd like to give you that opportunity. Now I'm going to call upon the author of the bill then to close. Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes, you are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank my colleagues for the deliberation on this bill and, and making the necessary amendments to make it, make sure that the safety protocols are in place, but also affording the opportunity for those with epilepsy to be given that opportunity. So I, I just want to extend my thank yous on that. And I also like, if there's no objections, before we move this to the voting file, that if there's no objections, to add Senator Matt Rector as third co-sponsor.
On, on that amendment then to make Senator Rector as the third co-sponsor, there being no objections, so ordered.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker.
On the motion then to place bill number one, one, two. This substituted in the floor to the third reading file, no objections, therefore it is sent down. Thank you very much. One, one, six, Interogun's not here, so we're going to go ahead and skip that, and we're going to move on to bill one, three, five. I'd like to recognize the author, Senator Ada.
Do you have a meeting right now?
Oh, gosh, there's going, yes, there was a request by a member to present a resolution to about a hundred students at four-thirty, so this might be an appropriate time to take a break, come back into session tomorrow at nine o'clock. Thank you very much, very recessed.